Please be seated. Can I ask all mobile phones to switch to silent, please, or switched off? It's with great sadness that I have to announce the death of Denise Wilson. Denise was employed as a driver in public transport. Denise was sixty-four years old and had been employed for eighteen years. Our thoughts are with Denise's family and friends. Would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect? Do we have any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. councillor Gemma Joy, councillor Karen King, councillor Graham Jeffrey, councillor Chris Jones and councillor Malcolm Head.
Thank you. Do we have any more apologies? Thank you. Just, are we at the top? My screen's not working. Do we know about it? Do I know who's speaking because there's no audio here? That's better. Thank you. Right. The green form's going wrong for anyone who's got any interest in anything we're going to speak about. Can we move on to the minutes of the last meeting, please? Held on the first of August twenty twenty four. Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Thank you. Just to note, the attendance matrix is on the back of the agenda. Is everyone okay with that? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Councillor Thompson?
I just, I just, I just wanted to draw members' attention to page thirty-four. So, under the supplementary question from councillor Hanaway, third line, Mr. Mayor, it references a full figure of one thousand eight hundred and twenty pounds. I do not think that has a value of sterling. I think that is simply a number. So, for exactitude, I would suggest that we consider deleting the pounds sign.
Yep, no problem. We'll get that done. It doesn't actually give us any matters arising on this or any, so, but yeah, we'll get that done, no problem. Right, just to, thank you to everybody who attended my charity night last Friday at Cleveland Golf Club. It was a good night. I think everyone enjoyed it and we raised nearly three thousand pounds with the sponsorship, so thank you very much. And if anyone still owes money, if you see Jean in a matter of urgency, please. My next charity fundraiser will be on Friday, the eighth of November, at Loftus Social Club with live music featuring the Beepeaks and Pie and Peas. Again, that'll be ten pound a ticket and tickets will be available from Jean Holmes, if you'd like to get them, please. On the eighteenth of October, we are having a town twinning visit from our twin town of Troisdorf in Germany, when a group, including two deputy mayors, will be making a visit to the area. We look forward to welcoming them. I've attended many engagements since the last council meeting, but I feel that one of the main ones was the Sod Cooten Cemetery for the new pool at Eston, which shows that we are moving forward with the project and everybody can look forward to the future new pool in Eston. Thank you. Have you got any comments from the leader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to say everybody enjoyed themselves, not one winner out of all them races. Firstly, I'd just like to welcome new councillor Craven to your first full council meeting. Councillor Craven, a pleasure to have you here. I'm sure members will welcome, members will welcome the reopening of Saltburn tramway. A lot of work went into making this happen after all the damage caused by the fire in the pump room in January. It is an historic attraction and there were restrictions on how we did work due to its listing, but now it is open again and will remain open into the winter months for residents and visitors to enjoy. We have had interest from residents interested in becoming foster carers at our recent meet, the Carers Event and the Care Key from Walgarden. Members of the public got the chance to speak to whoever, who was already, people that were already fostering children and young people for us, and this will hopefully lead to an increase in our number of in-house foster carers. Living with a foster family gives children and young people in our area, in our care, the best chance of a great start in life and it is most cost-effective for us at the council. Since we last met, our borough has hosted two big events to the public. Thousands of visitors came to enjoy the Between the Tides free festival for the children and the families. The weather was challenging with high winds, meaning we had to reorganise some of the events, but that didn't stop anybody enjoying themselves. Also, the crowds came out to watch the Cooten's elite cyclists compete in the stage of the Tour of Britain. The cyclists passed through East Cleveland on towards the stage finishing right car. There was entertainment for families and live television coverage of the event showcased to our borough nationally once again, with viewers seeing stunning views of our fantastic coast and countryside. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any more announcements from any other cabinet members? Oh, right, move on. Managing Director? Any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief update from me. I have asked the monitoring officer, Steve Newton, due to a conflict on various aspects of the council agenda, to step down from this meeting, but we do have Andrew Nixon here, who's the council's deputy monitoring officer. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, no questions received from the public. So, move on to consider and agreeing a report from Cabinet and the council committees. The first one is review of statement of principles for gambling. Councillor Pallister to move the report.
Can I just move the report and take questions from members?
Can we have a second, please, for that report? Thank you. Anyone, any questions from anyone? Yeah, comes out of the way, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. Paragraph twenty-one in the actual statement of principles itself, not, not the covering report, the principles itself. The title is protecting children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling, but the paragraph underneath says this objective generally means preventing children from taking part in gambling. It doesn't mention the other vulnerable persons at all. And of course, given what we know about the machines in some of these premises, it would be, I think, good to know what steps the council would take to protect them as well. On the subject of children, it says they might decide to supervise the entrances, the gaming machines and to segregate areas of the premises. So, can we also know about what measures will protect vulnerable persons as well, please?
Mr. Hanaway. I will need to apologise because I've actually, for whatever reason, I've actually missed this report. So, what I will do is get your answer in writing and in depth as well. And I apologise to members for missing the, the actual report on the council agenda. Not sure how I've done it, but this is the first time I've done it and I apologise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? Is that okay then? Do we take that report as written? With the answers to come back to your council anyways, all right? Thank you. Thanks then. Right, move on to financial. Can we just have a vote just to approve that, please? All of us in favour, please, of the report? Anyone against? That's Carrie. Thank you. Right, move on to financial update, quarter one. Councillor Massey to move the report, please.
Yes, I'll move the report and I think councillor Brown is going to second this. Yes? So, just a few quick words on this. Members will be aware that the budget setting of the council is done by full council, but the reports about the quarterly updates go to Cabinet. So, this is the quarterly update that went to the last Cabinet, which Cabinet can make the decision about. But because within the report, there were three items that required a change to the capital programme, that's why the report's in front of us today. So, those three items that required a change to the capital programme were an extra one point three million inserted into the capital programme to help with some costs that would have otherwise had to be spent from the revenue budget. Also, the use of one million pounds this year and into the future, which is a result of the decision that we took in the budget last year, which was to use flexibly our capital receipts. We have to get approval for this every year. So, in the budget last year when it was passed, we approved the use of, the flexible use of capital receipts. In shorthand, if we sell something, we can use the money to offset costs on the revenue budget. Without that express consent, we can't normally do that, but we have express consent to do it. So, there's a million pounds that's mentioned in the report that will be used in twenty-four, twenty-five and a bit more in twenty-five, twenty-six, but that will be a decision that we'll take in the next year's budget as well. And then finally, there's a small transfer of about a hundred K, which is moving from education grant funding and it's to go towards paying for a heat pump in a school. So, it's those three simple changes. In essence, I'm not going to talk about the full report which went to Cabinet, but the full report that went to Cabinet showed this council has a financial challenge, an enormous one at that. There is a twelve point four million overspend. Action we've already taken has got that down to six point four plus a seven hundred K overspend last year. These decisions with the capital programme allow us to not incur extra revenue costs. So, I would implore members to agree to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Open for debate. Councillor Kerr, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, councillor Massey, as always, for your report. I have a question about the bullet points at the bottom of page seventy and the investment of one point three million pounds. I would have liked to have seen a breakdown of that figure because I am particularly interested in the investment in IT and reconfiguring the office accommodation for staff. So, I'm not sure what proportion of that one point three is going towards those costs. Also, to support that investment, I would have expected to see a business case that outlined the savings that that investment is expected to bring and over what timescale. So, simply in the interests of more, I'm sorry, sorry, in the interest of more considered decision-making, that's why I'm asking those questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hanaway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same paragraph, please. How much of the one point three million was spent on Saltburn Clifflift? I'm asking because a resident asked me in the Saltburn app and I didn't know. So, if you tell me, I can tell him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would have been helpful if the previous councillor's question had been asked and then I might not know whether I was going to ask a similar question.
It's a debate, Councillor Thompson. So, we get all the questions and councillor Massey will come out at the end.
Yes. So, thank you for that. I truly respect and understand the question by the first speaker. I think it's really important that all members are fully understanding of all of the detail in any capital decision-making that we're required to undertake. So, I fully support that first question. I also support the detail in the second question, but there are two elements I just want to ask specifically on. One is capitalising revenue. This is always a very gray area and I think it would be really helpful if members understood the benefits to the revenue budget, which may simply be the withdrawal of that value, which we're yet to determine, or it may not. So, I think it would be helpful if councillor Massey could explain how the capitalisation is actually going to benefit the revenue budget. My second question does appertain to the Clifflift and it is to ask where are we with the business plan? We were promised a business plan two years ago for the Clifflift. The consultants were appointed last year. They undertook their work. We were interviewed to give a contribution to the deliberations and I understood they were going to report earlier this year. So, having spent an amount of money, and it would be good to know how much we did spend on the consultancy, where are we with the business plan that arose out of their deliberation?
Thank you, Councillor Thompson. Councillor Davies, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just councillor Massey, it might be something you might be able to look into for me. I don't know if any other councillors are in this position, but I seem to always get a phone call from plan.com, which I believe is the council's mobile phone providers, asking me if I'm prepared to pay the bill for this month. Now, if the council are in that much trouble, I might be able to spare one month's pay, but if, if this continues, I don't think I'll be able to do it every month. So, if there's a way of being able to get all our mobile phones taken off the contract number so that we're not responsible for paying the bill, that would be much appreciated.
Right, no more questions. So, councillor Massey?
No, I've not been getting those phone calls, councillor Davies, but I'm happy to pass that back to our IT and telecommunications team so that you don't get any more of them in the future. Regarding some of the costs that were mentioned here, so the cost in terms of the IT systems is three hundred and seven thousand. The cost in terms of the Clifflift is ninety thousand. And the other costs that are in the report of the one point three relate to telecare, in particular, the digitisation of services there. The simple version of this is, I'm happy to get people more information, that is not a problem. But if this would have gone through the revenue budget, we wouldn't necessarily have got that information because it would have been part of the day-to-day management and directorate management that takes place within our directorates. The reason that it's in front of us today is because to try and mitigate costs or try and avoid costs to our revenue budget, we're seeking to capitalise, as councillor Thompson said, capitalise these costs where we can so that we don't put the revenue budget under more pressure. In effect, this money was going to be spent one way or another and it's just prudent at this time to try and spend it from the capital programme rather than the revenue programme. But I'm happy to try and find out further information if people would like in terms of the IT breakdown, in terms of the Clifflift. Ninety thousand for the Clifflift, I think, is particularly to do with capitalisation of repairs since the fire, basically. That's the line for that. The three hundred and seven's a bit broad, so I'm happy to get you how the three hundred and seven breaks down, councillor Kerr. Regarding the management plan of Saltburn in general, I will defer to colleagues in growth, but I'm sure that both the director and the cabinet members are here and have heard your plea, councillor Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Massey.
Just for a point of information, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I did not make reference to a management plan. I made reference to the business plan that was procured for the operation and management of the Clifflift.
Okay, we haven't got a second of a report. Do we have a second of a report, please, yeah? And then can we all vote, all of us in favour of the report, please? That's Carrie. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, portfolio holders. Bill Silver's has just gone out and he's reporting now. Can we move to B? Can we move, can we move to highways? Is that okay, yeah? Why Bill's away, so apologies, councillor Quartermain, but can you give your report, please?
Oh, I'm going ahead of you. Do you want me, do you want to go now or do you want me to? Okay, I'll let you get settled then. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you'll be pleased to know I won't be going through the report verbatim. I expect every member's read the report, all twenty-two pages of it. So, I'm just going to pick out some salient points that I want to address and I welcome questions afterwards. So, this is the annual report for highways and transport portfolio of the past year. It represents the achievements and challenges faced by the department and highlights essential services like highways maintenance, street lighting, drainage, flooding and coastal management. These services play a crucial role in maintaining the infrastructure of the borough, which impacts on the daily lives of our residents. Over the past year, the department has benefited from long-term funding up to two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven and the stability that that brings. Previous funding was coming in year on year, making it really impossible to plan. This stability helped the department to recruit, to improve efficiencies and to balance day-to-day operations with long-term infrastructure planning. This has supported data-driven asset management to maintain and improve our highway assets. This technology prioritises resurfacing of roads and maintenance based on various data points such as road condition, deterioration, safety metrics and lifecycle management. This has also shaped and improved communication with members such as introducing the six-year resurfacing programme, which covers around a hundred and ten thousand metres square of our roads and one thousand four hundred and twenty metres square of our pavements. And I am pushing a similar plan for gully cleansing, of which we service around twenty-nine thousand gully jobs, gully pots as part of the data-driven maintenance programme. This type of planning ensures we have long-term structural integrity and is one of the key reasons the roads in Redcar and Cleveland have been recognised as being the best in the country by the Department of Transport. To help deliver on this, we have recruited a senior structure and assets engineer, which is a critical role for ensuring our statutory obligations are met in relation to our many structures and crucial when you consider, for example, lorries passing through our borough often having to, the excess of five hundred tonnes on their, on their, on their backs there. Road safety is our top priority and as such, we have strengthened risk management by adding an extra highways inspector to monitor the network, ensuring we have our, that we meet our statutory responsibilities. The department have also been trialling carbon negative materials and warm mix resurfacing on our roads, reflecting our commitment to meeting the council's net zero carbon targets. Our commitment to improving the transport network also extends to traffic management. For example, the recent Normandy Top Improvement Project upgrading traffic signals and increasing the junction's capacity has reduced queuing. This project was completed within budget and on time and improved local bus journey times. The department has also introduced real-time defect reporting using handheld devices, which organises right first time fixes over quick, quick solutions such as potholes. Because of the long-term funding programme, the department can, can now proactively manage unadopted infrastructure too, like parks and cemeteries, through regular inspections. This reduces the council's liabilities and improves public spaces. The department is responsible for maintaining approximately four hundred and fifty structures, including bridges, roads, coverts and even retaining walls. Regarding flooding, moving on to flooding, we, we continue to face increasing challenges due to climate change. We are taking a proactive approach to managing flood risk with partners with long-term solutions in mind. Current flood alleviation schemes across areas like Redcar, Mask and Saltburn show our commitment to protecting those homes and businesses. We are also focused on managing flooding in East Cleveland and strengthening our response through our partnerships with the Environment Agency and Northumbrian Water, who both also have responsibilities as we do. In Loftus, we have just received planning permission for the installation of designer flood doors at twenty-one of the properties that often get flooded when there's a huge downpour. Collaborative communications are to be published quarterly to keep residents informed of progress and plans. Coastal management is also a priority with efforts to ensure our coastline is effectively managed to protect it from the challenges of erosion and climate change. This past year has seen big strides in improving workplace facilities. At the Grangestown depot, when I visited, conditions were below par with fifty percent of our staff working in temporary cabins in inadequate welfare facilities. We've refreshed these facilities and we have relocated our engineering team to the Southies Business Centre, providing a far better working environment with modern workstations. This was completed back in June and with the engine, engineering team now settled, we will start refurbishing the depot. The completion of these improvements is expected by the end of the financial year. We've made significant progress in replacing ageing vehicles to avoid escalating maintenance costs. This includes five new refuse wagons, a small street sweeper and twenty-six electric vans amongst other equipment. For the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five programme, we plan to acquire more gritters and sweepers and we are also exploring alternative fuels like electric and hydro-treated vegetable oil. A joint effort with Middlesbrough and Harley Pool is underway to procure food waste collection vehicles ahead of the mandatory rollout in two thousand and twenty-six. We continue to support the Tees Valley Combined Authority in developing key transport schemes. Engagement events have allowed residents to provide input and the first CRSDS projects are expected to break ground in twenty-five, twenty-six. We're also making progress on upgrading obsolete traffic signals across the borough with several key locations identified for replacement over the next two years. And finally, Mr. Mayor, the department has faced significant operational and resource challenges due to staff reductions over the years. To maintain the high-quality service that residents expect, we need more resources, particularly additional gully suckers and carriageway planning equipment. And we need to fill key staff positions in both the operations and engineering teams. Addressing these gaps is essential for efficient service delivery. Looking ahead, we are developing a comprehensive transport model to assess the impact of new developments and future congestion points and this will support future funding bids and help guide our long-term transport strategy. Thank you very much and I welcome some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a question-and-answer session. So, the first one is councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Cal, for your report. As you're aware, you'll know what I'm going to speak about. The fiasco on Loftus Bank, with it being closed since Friday night, Northumbrian Water. This has happened for twenty-odd years I've been involved with the council. Every time there's an accident, whether a water main burst or a gas pipe, everything comes through Skinning Grove. This time, there's been no sort of joined up between the water board, us, the bus services. It's been a complete fiasco. I mean, I'm going to speak now the three ways into Skinning Grove. One at the bottom of the bank, the main road, off the main road. One at the top, Carling Howe, which goes by the steelworks, goes down. One we call Bothroy's Bank, which One we call Bothroyds Bank, which goes up Baldby, up the back road to Baldby. The traffic that goes along the main road is all goes down there. They put a diversion sign saying, go on the moors, with the little diversion sign like that. They put a couple of plastic barriers, which get blown down, and a couple of cones, which is supposed to stop people going up the don. So, I mean, that's, if they move them, that's their own thing. But what I'm concerned about is the condition of the roads, the back roads. For years and years and years, and God knows how many engineers have had down there, the back roads from the works is just all crumbling. It's dangerous at the best of times. And without all the traffic that's going down, thank God, touch wood, we only had two accidents. You know, only had one on the bank, which the young lady went to Barn and Graham's garage, had the side of her car taken off and never stopped and went down. She went in there in a right state. Another one, as you go down into Skinning Grove and round, to come back out at Loftus, had hit the bollard, another car, and the bollard was stuck in the front of her car and everything. That was just two accidents. There could have been more. So my concern is if you're going to divert, which there is no diversion signs down, nobody does anything, they just come down. The back bank, Bothroyds, is in a hell of a state now, excuse me, because of the floods. And there's, I think we've sent some photographs around to anybody on the phone to have a look. There's, there's, as long as this, and as wide as this, and about that deep, where cars can go down, it's a mess. We say that we're looking, we can't get a machine over there.
Councillor Hunt, can we, can we get the question to that? I want to put up ten minutes, it's took four minutes so far, please.
The question is, Mr Mayor, it's important enough for people's lives and things. The question is, if you're going to use the roads, would you have the decency to, and the respect for the people of Skinning Grove and the people for East Cleveland, to do something about the roads and make them roadworthy so that we can do something, instead of just kicking it along, because we won't let you kick the can along the road anymore. Believe me, this has come to the point now, and I'm finished now, Mr Mayor, thank you. This has come to the point now where the plaster's come off, the boil's burst, I've said it before. There's only you can fix it, but we'll make you fix it because we, we need it. The, the people of Skinning Grove deserve more, and the people of East Cleveland, Loftus, Carling Howe, deserve more. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Quatman, please.
None of that's in the report, but it is a safety critical issue, you know, and it's something that we should be on top of in terms of, you know, our programme. And you know that I put out a statement during the week there to address some of that. I was unfortunately away that weekend, typically, but, you know, typically these things happen on a weekend when you're at least expecting it, and that's when the service should really be kicking in. You know, during the week, we're all available, everybody's, you know, able to, we're able to get in touch with everybody. On a weekend, it's different, we've got a skeleton service on, and, and then we're relying on what our system, our process is in place. Fortunately, our process wasn't in place, it failed on that weekend. That's because, I know you're saying that these things happen, they do happen invariably. I think the last time was about fifteen years ago, on, on a, on a water main on the road, on a weekend. And that's the point, though. When these things do happen, we need that, that proper structure in place. Now, from my understanding, obviously the water pipe burst, Northern Water came, Northumbrian Water came out, put the traffic management in place, started digging up the road, they put all that in place on a Friday night, and didn't tell anybody, as far as I'm aware. And they said they told somebody, but nobody knew about it. First we knew about it, the council, the department knew about it, was on Saturday, because a reaver got in touch. Now, that's not to exonerate blame from ourselves, because, as I say, if we've got a process in place, then the utility companies need to know what that process is, whether it's five years ago, ten years ago, fifty, it doesn't matter. They know what the process is, they need to dig our roads up, they need to contact the council. And the council need to know what to do from there, they need to make sure that the situation's safe. And then, and once all that, that's the priority, the safety. After that, we need to be doing the communication. The communication goes out to the public, it goes out to the emergency services, and then it also comes out to us, the councillors, so that we can make sure that the public know what's going on. And thereafter, social media, public communication as well to back that up. And for me, repetitive communication on social media, same, same message every couple of hours or so, just to keep people up to date what's going, and even updating after that. Well, I know that we did put social media out on Saturday afternoon, we did, councillor Hunt, I can show you, on Facebook. We did on, on social media, we did. It was a small paragraph that said exactly what happened, where it was. I totally get your point. People, people, I, I'm not on Facebook very often, okay, but see, people seem to like hang, hang on these. And you can quite easily miss all these posts, but they were there. Also on Sunday, and also on Monday, and then obviously I've put my statement out as well. I totally respect and take your point, though. And then I've discussed this with the department, and we are going to be updating our processes immediately. Sorry. Come and see me afterwards.
But everybody took notice of us. They didn't see the little bit, they were that confused.
Councillor Hunt.
Right, thank you. I know, Mr Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'd like to go further, Mr Mayor, but I realise I can't.
We're only supposed to have ten minutes, and we've had ten minutes, that one question, and I know it's important. I know it's important, and I've got another nine speakers, so if you go on, it's going to take an hour and a half to get off this subject. So if you can just get to the point of the question, then we can move on, yeah, to that, you know. I know it's all important. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
I, I hope it is, Mr Mayor, thank you. Two questions. One relates to page one-twenty, future plans. There's a need to invest in our highway network, yes there is. When we were putting together the current, now out of date, local plan in two thousand and sixteen, we talked about dueling the highway between Redcar Lane and Quarry Lane Roundabout in order to support the housing structures and development that was planned in Mask area and East Cleveland. Can we be assured that this element is going to appear in the future development plans? And also the roundabout at four lane ends that was postulated. My second question relates to page one-two-two, five-four, non-highway infrastructure in parks. In Saltburn Valley Gardens, as I'm sure you're aware, Mr Mayor, which is on the Historic England at Risk Register, the pathways are deteriorating almost to the point of oblivion, and the play area has to be the worst maintained play area in the borough. So could these two areas be given priority? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Quatman, please.
And, yeah, thank you for your question, councillor Thompson. On your first question, yes, we are waiting for, we're waiting for the government to get back to us regarding the national framework so that we can start getting on with our local plan. At the moment, we haven't been given the guidance. New government have just recognised there's a big hole there as well, so we don't know exactly what's going to be coming and what we can, what we can do procedurally here in Redcar and Cleveland. We don't know how, how far they're going to go with planning reform, et cetera. So, so it's, it's an important question, it's not one I'm holding back on, we're waiting, just like you're waiting. Your second question regards, in regards to the Valley Gardens, it's not really my portfolio, I believe it's... Oh, the past, okay. We can have a, we can, so, my apologies, we can, we can have a discussion about that. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Councillor Hart, please.
Thank you, Carl, for your very extensive report. And I've got two very quick questions on parking. And we, we in Gisborne have been given a very vague December date, as in just December, to initiate the one-hour free car parking that was agreed by the house, which we are grateful for, but would like more. And if we could find out a specific date, it would help us. The second question is, leading from that, traditionally, we've always had, running from the first of December, a half-day free car parking to encourage people to come and shop for Christmas. Our High Street is dying at the moment, and I am hoping that you will confirm we will be getting this half-day free car parking like we have traditionally. Thanks, Carl.
Councillor Quatman.
Thank you, councillor Hart. And yes, I've, I've had this question before, I had this question from Luke Meyer MP as well. He wanted to know also whether or not this free, one-hour free parking was going to happen before Christmas, and preferably on the run-up to Christmas, so you can get out there and do a bit of shopping. We have to go for the procedure, as you know, TROs normally take about three months, and I have pressed the department on that because exactly the same, I want that in place before December. Now, if we can't get that in place before December, for whatever reason, I will make sure we put in a temporary measure so that we're replicating that or even extending it in some way. Is that okay? In terms of your half-day free parking, I'm not really aware of that, but I take, I take your, take your point on that. If you, if you can just drop me a, a couple of lines, so I've got a reference point in my emails, and I will make sure I chase that up. Is that okay?
From one o'clock on an afternoon, the car parks in Gisborne were free for shoppers. Thank you.
Right, moving on then. Councillor Cheney, please.
Thank you for your report, Carl, and it would be a miss of me not to mention Normby Top as it's in my ward. The works that were carried out were welcomed by the residents, they're good, but they're not perfect. At present, we still have vehicles travelling from Armsby, turning right at the wrong junction, which could result in a head-on collision. We have a splinter island on Normby Road that is not wide enough for people with prams or bush bikes, so they are standing side-on. Now, this has been reported to the engineers, the engineers have been out, and they're telling me everything's fine. Now, when I go back to my residence and I say everything's fine, that doesn't, that doesn't wear with them. So what I'm asking from you, Carl, is a commitment, as you have in the past, to come out, inspect it with me, bring the correct engineers, and also talk to the residents. Would you be able to do that?
And thank you, councillor Cheney, for, for your points. And, and I would say this to every member, you know, as a cabinet member, quite often, I, I will be copied into issues that you've got in Normby, et cetera, et cetera, all over. I allow that to play out, my style is allow that to play out rather than to intervene. I want to see that the department is doing their job, talking to the, talking to your members, making sure that you've had some sort of response. Where, when it starts falling down, when, when you're not feeling like you're getting the answers that you want or need, then sure, you know, keep coming back to me, and, and that's when I'll, I'll intervene and try and help you. I will obviously, you know, I'll, I'll come out and I'll set that meeting up. I have seen the emails, I have seen that the, the meeting was set up, and it came back and it's gone quiet. So that's where you need to be coming back to me and saying, still not happy with this? Please come out, please come out and, and have a look yourself. I can't promise you anything, but I can promise you that when we come out and it's a reasonable request, we will, we will make sure that we're trying to do something to that. And that, that goes for every member in here. Is that okay?
Thank you. Councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Quatman. Yeah, okay. It's just, it's probably a bit of a tangent there, but it's linked in with the flooding. We're coming into the season more rapidly than we have done previously about leaves dropping off the trees. And particularly in, I'm sure it's throughout the borough, but in Zetland and West Dyke Road, we have significant tree-lined avenues which are beautiful. But they cause immense problems blocking the sinks and, and flooding in various places. They're also extremely dangerous for people walking on the pavements and indeed on the roads. Is there a plan of action to work your way through? I know you'll have demands everywhere to come and sweep up our leaves, and some residents do, bless them, clear their own leaves up and out of the way. But I was also interested to know what happens to them afterwards? And in terms of recycling and the climate and everything, do we ever consider making leaf mould? Or what happens to the leaves when they're collected? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ovens. I can't tell you what happens with the leaves afterwards. But, you know, I've, I've been delivered this one, which is a contemporary art gallery, and maybe, you know, I don't know whether they can use it, that kind of thing, but, but we can find out what happens to the leaves afterwards. But, I mean, you make a good valid point, you know, whenever, whenever it's autumn, obviously we've got the, the leaves blocking up the gullies and the drains. And with the report there, you know, I talk about asset management and long-term funding. And what that's helped us to do is invest more into, like, long-term planning with our technology. So, and what that do, does as well, it helps create life cycle management and hotspoting. So year on year, we start knowing where the, where the main pressure points are, without having to think about them or being reactive, we can start being more proactive. I'm hoping that's how it's going to play out, but, you know, that's what our team is on with now, and they're getting more and more OFAE and efficient with this data management system. So like gullies, like resurfacing, you know, things like trees, leaves falling off trees around the borough, we should know where those action areas are going to be and to be able to be responsive in our planning. Is that okay? But, you know, in the meantime, again, anybody got issues with these kind of things, please do. Send the emails in, copy me in if you want to, and make sure that I'm observing what's going on.
Councillor.
Call him up and get the kids, give him a good kiss.
Councillor Leroy, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Page one-hundred and seven, it talks about Mask, a new Mask flood alleviation scheme. On there, there is concrete throttle for Longbeck Roundabout. First question would be, why was that not included in the south of Mask development where there is such extensive works going on? And I've heard that the road will be closed on Longbeck Road for, for five months, which was news to me when I read it yesterday. The next bit on here is with regards to Longbeck Station, Cat Flat Lane, an attenuation basin. Now, there is a motion later on today, which is exactly about this development, which is behind there, which would be behind this attenuation basin. Now, the decision of the officers, of course, and we'll be debating that later, was to ignore the objections. But here, we're talking about attenuation basin, so that appears as though there are flooding issues there after all. And then finally, it talks about diversion of water from the roundabout to Cat Flat Lane. And the disappointing piece here is that it's three-quarters of a million funded in a grant from the Environmental Agency, so out of the taxpayer's pocket. Again, we have the social investment and the taxpayer propping up billion-pound development firms because we are unable to do our job in Redcar and Cleveland and put appropriate planning conditions into place. So the question would be, can we have a bit more of a telescopic view on these, please, so that the taxpayer doesn't get dumped with the work that has to be done to roads to fund developments and essentially the black hole in this, in this council's finances?
Councillor Quatman.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor Leroy. I would suggest that these three questions will require a lengthy answer. I've not received any email or messaging from yourself on these questions, and I can prepare a little bit more for you if you did, and I'd appreciate that if you would in future. But let's, let's go through this, have a discussion, let's sit down and talk to the officers in my presence, and we'll see if the issues are, are there, but go through it now. I think I'll be studying for about twenty seconds. But please do, please do.
All right, thanks, sir. Councillor Quatman, can you address the meeting, obviously because it's about everyone, yeah, yeah, because we can't e when you're over there, do you know what I mean? Right, moving on to councillor Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor. Briefly, there's quite a bit in the report about vehicle replacement. Some councils lease their binwagons, for example, so they must find it cost-effective. When did we last compare the cost of lease with purchase? When did we last compare the cost of lease with purchase? And secondly, if I may, just briefly, on page 121, you talk about a car parking review in Redcar. Are you planning the same for Gisborne? I'm thinking particularly in the context that there is a new operator in Gisborne, private operator, that is charging substantially less than the council is charging currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Quatman, please.
It's in a lot of cases with like vehicles and leasing and purchasing, it's a bit six and two threes. You know, we mentioned Bobcats, for instance, you know, to hire them out would be something in the region of seventy thousand pounds, but to purchase it is about seventy thousand pounds. But if we've got that vehicle here, the next year, we're not paying that seventy thousand pounds out, so there's a bit of a cost-saving. That works sometimes, it doesn't always work, sometimes it's a bit, because of maintenance and damage, that kind of stuff, and these things do depreciate. So it's a judgment call, to be honest with you. Sometimes it's a bit of a good saving. I often think it's nice to have our own fleet, you know, so that we can just get straight on with it, and we're not messing about with a third person. In terms of the parking, yeah, we're doing reviews, we can absolutely look at that. Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't too sure exactly what, where you, what private operator you were talking about there, but if you want to, again, if you want to message, well, go ahead, if that's okay, just quickly. Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Well, yeah, please drop us a couple of lines, and we can discuss that as well. But, yeah, I mean, all these reviews are always ongoing everywhere, you know, in the borough. Whenever we're future planning, over the years, you know, invariably, we're going to be putting reviews in for different things. So, yeah, we're doing one in Redcar in Cleveland, we're always looking at Gisborne as well, and right across East Cleveland, so, but let's have a, let's have a longer conversation.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and thanks councillor Cheney for addressing some of the points I was going to bring up as well. Just one thing on the scheme, there's a few little issues still with Normby Top, there's a hole that's developing, that is redeveloping again up there. There's also the drain that still needs fixing. But just on the report, page 110, where it says about the S106 money and the £200,000, I think this is an example of where, I know the council comes under a lot of criticism about S106, but this is, if you get it done right, it's a prime example of how it can improve an area, and I think as a council, we sometimes don't get it right, and maybe it's luck at how this scheme was approached and whatnot. And just a, just one personal thank you, actually, to Clive Allen, who kind of ran the project, he was brilliant from day one, he asked, answered any questions that we had, yeah, and I'd just like to thank him personally. One final point, on the meeting you have with councillor Cheney, if one of the Normby councillors could also be included, that'd be fantastic.
Councillor Quatman.
Yeah, and thank you for your question, councillor, and questions. Absolutely, you know, again, I'm very sure that you're copied in. And anybody else who wants to come along as well, you're quite welcome to. No, you make, you make valid points. This is a working council, we have in Clementweather, it knocks the roads up, you know, it goes on and on and on, these guys and girls, you know, they work all the time, and the demands are high, and all these issues are always going to be, always going to be there, and we can address them. Sometimes we're proactive, other times we have to be reactive. So just make sure that you're, because again, I haven't heard about this, so again, you're feeding that information to me, even if I'm just copied in just so I can keep an eye on what's going on there. I missed the second point, oh yeah, in terms of staffing, absolutely, you know, everywhere I go, every time I go out, you know, I've got nothing but admiration for our team, you know, they work extremely hard, they're so patient, you know, sometimes I'm going back and forwards, you know, four, five, six times because I haven't quite got the response or the answer, very patient people, you know, I know we all, we all try to be quite patient as well as councillors, we get it, but they get it probably three or four times as much. So just appreciate that, and I'll certainly take that, take that back to the department. Clive Allen, absolutely, top-rate officer, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Grogan, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, firstly, Carl, thank you for your report. I'd just like to say the team does a cracking job in Kirkleetham, especially along West Dyke Road, which is one of the busiest roads in the town, also Plantation Road, which also takes, especially with the potholes. I usually report and it's usually sorted in the next couple of days, so I give the teams credit there. I'm also happy that the Redcar and Yerby flood, I can speak in my head, the flood alienation is actually coming to Yerby. Yerby's sometimes getting spun, gotten about as a village, and it's really good. Obviously, we've got a timescale between 24 and 28, obviously sooner the better, it's not going to be this year, so, yeah, we'd like to be kept in loop when that actually commences, ward councillors. But obviously, the environmental agency has given us £950,000 towards these works. If by any uncertain circumstances that any type of thing might occur, does the council have to fill in the gap if it overruns and spends? That's all the question is. Thank you.
Councillor Quatman, please.
Yeah, and thank you for your question, and I'll come from the back over. Well, yeah, sometimes if there's a shortfall, depending on what the shortfall is and if we can afford to do it, yes, you know, we will take it out of funding to make sure that project is finished. However, you know, it's like a lot of the projects that we see, sometimes it's kind of a value-added engineering kind of situation where we might not be able to do that bit anymore, you know, so all I can say is keep, keep your eye on the ball there and ensure that we're communicating over it. I don't think there's a day goes by where I don't get an email or a phone call or a text, a message from councillor Fairley regarding Kirkleetham Ward. I mean, she's brilliant, Mary Sheen, hello. And I do pick your messages up as well, and I know you're a very active councillor, I'm not trying to do you down, but what I'm saying is, you know, I'm constantly, you know, I'm dancing on the hotcoats all the time, and I appreciate that, you know, because it keeps me accountable and keeps me, keeps me at it. So any, any issues that are going on, again, all your wards, wherever you are, you know, if you've got an issue there and you're not quite happy, make sure that I know about it, it's no good, you know, sticking stuff out on social media or just maybe doing stuff in the dark. You know, I've said to a number of the councillors here, let me know if I know, you know, my interest is the borough, Redcar and Cleveland council, first, Redcar and Cleveland Borough, first and foremost, you know, I want to make sure that this borough is safe and looked after before anything else. That's really important. Everybody in this chamber has a responsibility to make sure that I'm aware that we're doing the job, first and foremost, so please do, you know, keep that correspondence going. Okay?
Thank you. Councillor Davies, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I know normally we would all start with, you know, thank you very much for the report, it's a very good report, but to be honest, it doesn't really fill me with much enthusiasm considering there's probably half a page section about future plans and the ambition for this council in terms of transport for the residents of this borough. So that's twenty-two and a half pages that I've read of pure firefighting in relation to us doing stuff that we have to do to make things right when things have gone wrong. What's going on at the TVCA Transport Committee? There's no mention of it at all in that report. There's one word, trains, and there was only one mention of trains, and that was in relation to the South Bank Railway Crossing Bridge that goes over, that was the only time railway got mentioned. What's happening with the East Cleveland Rail? What's happening with the Rosebury Park Scheme? Has all of that just vanished now? Is nothing happening? You know, this is a report that comes to council to tell us what's going on in terms of transport highways, the future aspirations of the people in this borough, so people can go to work, people can get out and about, when roads flood and roads get damaged, people can still access work and education. Our kids in East Cleveland in particular weren't able to get to school because of buses not turning up and taking them. If we'd have had trains, people would have still had an option to be able to get to work in some way, shape or form. Where's the aspiration for Redcar and Cleveland? Has it vanished? And if it has, at least have the decency to tell us that there is no longer ambition for transport in Redcar and Cleveland.
Thank you. Councillor Quatman, please.
Thank you, thank you councillor Davies. What I would say to you is politely, and is that the TVCA put out their own reports on the CRSTS, they're public record reports, everybody can see them and read them. If you wanted that report, I'd give you that report. The TVCA is not Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council, I can reference their report, I can put the information, no, no, no.
As a personal explanation, as a cabinet member for highways and transport for this borough, you would expect at least a little piece in the report given by the lead member to this council in relation to the role that he undertakes as cabinet member to this council in relation to the TVCA Transport Committee and what's going on in terms of their aspirations for the people in Redcar and Cleveland. Even just a snippet giving us the information and the detail should have been included in the report. When I was cabinet member and had that part in my, in my portfolio, I gave that update to these members in these chambers. I think it's well and truly admirable for him to be able to tell us that he doesn't have to give us it because we can get it from somewhere else, when at the end of the day, it's a report to council updating us on the work that the cabinet members.
Yeah, councillor Davies, I think we get your point, yeah. Councillor Quatman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and just to reiterate my point, you know, I'm not going to duplicate somebody else's report, you know, it's another body's report, well, it is, and it's very public. If you're interested in the CRSTS and CRSTS2 programmes, they are there on public record, very, very public. I mean, I do, I do make a reference to the TVCA, it is a light touch, but I'm not going to replicate their report. But what I could do in future, and I suppose maybe was amiss of me, is make reference to that report, I do mention the CRSTS2 in there. And again, you know, if there's any issue there that you want to discuss regarding loftus, transport, future transport plans, I mean, you know, the 2025 rail plans there, that's all part of the TVCA, TVCA, we've discussed East Cleveland stuff as well before. Again, you know, come back to me and ask, you know, I discuss future planning, I can't put detail on future planning, I can tell you, future planning, I could maybe do a light touch on that, but I can't give you all the detail because it's not there, it's just not there. But, yeah, in terms of the TVCA report, that's out there, I can ping you over some references, if you email me, I'll make sure that you have eyes on it, but I would, I would imagine you've already read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I bring in councillor Kerr, I've got one more speaker after councillor Kerr, that's councillor Brown, and then we're going to sum up, because it's been well over ten minutes, yeah. Councillor Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I couldn't believe it when councillor responsible for highways said that we have the best roads in the country. It's just incredible. I had to check with my colleague, did he really say that? The only thing I think has happened is that when these people have been going around deciding that we have the best roads in the country, they failed abysmally to travel along Stanghau Road, which is the worst road in the country.
Thank you councillor Kerr. Councillor Quatman, please.
Thank you councillor Kerr, and I think councillor Hunt would beg to differ, just take a trip out on Skinning Gill Bank. Well, you know, I was surprised to see that as well, and the surprising thing that, about that, where I'd seen it from, but I was, I mean, well, not surprised, but I was like, I was blown away, is that better? I was blown away, you know, because.
I'll sit down if I have you, councillor Quatman.
Because, because it's, I mean, when you're talking about the entire country, and we have been labelled number one for our roads, I'm not saying all our roads are perfect, I know there's potholes out there, what they're saying is our Carriageway is the best in the country, Southend apparently is the worst. And, you know, where I first picked that up, back in April, it was in the Sun newspaper, you know, you may be familiar, I don't tend to read it, but I was, it was sent to me, so, you know, I was, and so I was checking, and it came from the Department of Transport, they put out two reports, that claim is from their most honourous report, so we are number one, and we can put that, you can put that in the Gazette, Stuart, okay?
Right. Right, councillor, that's it, moving on. Guys, councillor Quatman, thank you. Councillor Quatman, thank you. Councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just for councillor Davies' benefit, I think I'm taking a little bit, some of the, I should take some of the flak, the East Cleveland Network Rail feasibility study is due in Jan 25 to come back, and I ask that last year's TVCA to be actively part of the findings now, just so I can pre-warn to update the cabinet member for January, for your news guys' information, I know how important this feasibility study is, but I have been pushed at every TVCA meeting for an update, and I've just been told that it wasn't ready yet, but I've now been invited by their transport officer to take part in the last few findings, and they're going to bring the report back in Jan 25 on the feasibility study, councillor. Okay?
Right, I don't think there was a question there, so I'll just, you okay, councillor Quatman?
Okay, thank you very much, thank you everybody for your questions, and, you know, sincerely, genuinely, you know, if there's something going on in your wards you're not happy about, please do contact me, you know, there's no point in running in the shadow.
Councillor Quatman, we're just going to move on with time at all, and you've said it about twenty times at all, no disrespect to you, right, but can we move on to the next report?
Five minutes?
No, 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 that's it, finished.
Okay.
Finished, thank you.
Email me, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to councillor services for children's portfolio, thank you.
Yes, sorry about missing my time slot there. I know I've been studying and giving a couple of reports before, but this is my first annual report, I've only been in the role a few months, it feels like much longer, I must say. And there've been other major changes in children's over the last year. We've lost Catherine and Vicky, our director and deputy, and we have a new DCS, Director of Children's Services, it's an important role, and it's Danielle, who's lived in our area for many years and so knows a lot of the issues. She's been in this role for two months, so I think it's been a tough baptism actually, given the finances around it, and I think this is her first council meeting, so I hope you're enjoying it, Danielle. I hope you've got your pencil ready to answer any questions that I'm unable to field here. And John, our incoming deputy director, starts next month, so Claire's still with us overseeing education provision, of course. So we've got a new leadership team, and we'll see some new strategy documents brought to cabinet and scrutiny over the coming months. This is a wide portfolio, it covers both education and children's services. I've noticed that, I'm doing two jobs here, in Middlesbrough, they've got two cabinet members covering this brief, so by necessity, this report only scratches the surface of what are a lot, a lot of very important issues that face this council. And of course, we've got a new government, if anybody noticed, and there's a new bill in the off-in from the King's Speech, the Children and Wellbeing Bill, so we face lots of new policy changes, and some of these are outlined at the start of the report, and they'll be going to be fleshed out by our team, put into local strategies over the coming months. Anyway, on to education and skills, I'll just go through the bullet points really on this, of, I think, the major issues in that field. Attendance, attendance has been a real problem since the Covid. It's not just in Redcar and Cleveland, it's all over. You'll see some of the numbers in the report, and if you look at the scrutiny committees in a lot more detail, we've got an initiative to make attendance everyone's business, and it's, it should have been launched last, last, a couple of weeks ago, but it's going to be launched soon, and so I hope that you'll all engage in that, because it's really important, isn't it, that we get our young people to attend schools? So what, please can you watch out for that? School exclusions are on the increase as well, school exclusions, there are far too many, there are far too many suspensions and exclusions, and again, it's a national trend, it's not just us. Home schooling, that comes. Home schooling, that continues to increase. I think it's rarely the best option for children to be schooled at home, but that's going up as well and, you know, it's, I think that's a problem really. We see, we, it's been well trailed, hasn't it, by the previous government and the current one, that the early years entitlement's being extended. Like everywhere else, there are going to be supply issues there and sufficiency issues are something that we've got to manage as a, as a council. So that's a problem that's coming up as well. And we've, we've noticed that, we've seen the, we've managed the sufficiency of places in schools as well. But we don't have direct control of the schools, of course, as they are almost entirely academies now. And that means that we've been busing too many children across the borough. It's a result of the bump in the birth rate. Really, it's around years eight and nine. And we're going to face actually, coming up, the opposite problem soon because roles are falling dramatically in primary schools. So we've got, you know, we're going to move from one extreme to the other. And that's going to be another problem for us in education. There's a large section in the report on special needs, special educational needs. And I'm not going to go into that in detail, it comes up through the scrutiny anyway. And I, and we'll, we can look at that in another place. And the theme I'll come back to, which I think is really something we can make a difference on, is supporting children at the very start of their lives. With that in mind, I recommend that you look more at Thrive at Five. It's a national initiative, started in Stoke, we're the second place to, to get the benefit of this. And that supports communities where some children aren't equipped to start school. You know, it's very, that very early years is really important in, in the development of children and later in life as well. So we've got that Thrive at Five initiative, that's one of them. I've gone to social care, the second part of the portfolio. The number of children in our care, you'll notice, is increasing. Keeps increasing. It's now over 400, I think it's 412 or maybe more currently. It's a parameter, it's a parameter, barometer, that's the right word, isn't it? Of the problems and deprivation in some of our communities. And there are, it just, it's just a surface number for deeper problems really. We've also seen an increase in high cost placements. These have a massive impact on the council's revenue budget. Apart from being a social, a social problem associated with it, there's a financial problem. Because some of these, some of these placements can cost a million pounds each per year. So these are, we're trying to address these as well. And we've got special committees looking at that and a special group of people looking into it. Another worrying factor, there's a bullet point tour here. Another worrying factor, the increase in children who are categorised as tempt. That's vulnerable, exploited, missing and trafficked. The headline figure's currently 26, but it's probably, you know, there's far more threat to children as a result of increasing organised crime in our area. You know, these are all worrying things, aren't they? It's not a pretty picture, is it? And we've two initiatives which attempt to respond to this. Shift, we had a great launch of Shift locally. A few people were here, were at that this last week, last week. And we've got the SAFE team, trying to protect young people as well. So those are two initiatives that we're working on to try and address that. There is a wide range of early support at our family hubs. These have recently been enhanced to provide a wider offer. And the details of that can easily be found. I think one I liked for me when I started this was visiting the MATCH, the multi-agency children's hub, which is in Ormsby. And that promotes joint working with other agencies, primarily, I think, the police. They're the first people often to find children in, in danger. It's the front door for our social care. And there are a lot of good things going on there, but particularly like to highlight the pre-birth team, which is based there. And I think it's been a massive success in supporting children even before they're born. Partnership working with police, schools and health is a key aspect of rescuing the current situation. And as a cooperative party councillor, dare I say, cooperation is the key. The youth service, very important in the fight against antisocial behaviour. And we strive to support that service even in these stringent times. We hope to expand our own children's homes. This starts with No Wrong Door and, and as continuing, we've put more detail through the scrutiny panels for that. This strategy hopefully will lead to both better social outcomes for our children and a saving on the revenue budget. Foster care, we need more foster carers in the borough. Please can you help to spread the word about this? We need a recr, we have got a recruitment drive. If you're having an event in your wards, please invite our fostering team along. This is my marketing pitch. It costs us 50% more to place a child with an agency foster carer, normally outside the borough, and it's got worse social outcomes. It's better if they're near to home. Separated and migrant young people, we've 71 of these young people. We call them separated and migrant because they, they're separated from their families. It's very sad sometimes to talk to them about that. They desperately need our care. They've suffered all sorts of trauma and they're separated from their families. The costs are funded nationally, for those that are wondering, though it comes out of, I believe, the overseas aid budget. And I think that, to my mind, that money should be spent in their own countries to try and reduce the push factors. Anyway, that's a long story. The ridings are being developed to support this aspect of our work in Redcar and Cleveland. We've issues with care leavers and their transition to adults, which is currently being addressed and we heard a little bit about in the session before council. In the report, we've included our relationships first logo. And I think if you have a look at that, I think it succinctly reflects our strategy. We've got a social worker academy, which is moving from strength to strength. It's starting to address shortages in social workers. We, you know, it's difficult to recruit social workers. It's not the only shortage area. Try employing an educational psychologist. These labour markets are failing at the moment. So to summarise our strategy, I think it falls into two categories, demand and supply. Well, I would say that, wouldn't I? On the demand side, we need to rebuild our communities.
Councillor Sovers, can you sum up, please?
Well, I'll, I'll just finish, I'm only, I'm on the last bit. We need to rebuild our communities. They've suffered from decline since the 1980s, like many traditional northern, post-manufacturing, working class communities. They're broken. They need the initiatives like Shift and Thrive at Five to mend them and to rebuild them. Before 1979, communities, our, these communities, our communities pulled together. They worked together, they helped one another, they acted cooperatively. Then we came, then came, there's no such thing as society. Focus on individualism and neoliberalism rather than community. Trickle down economics, that never worked. And now we're reaping the consequences. On the, as far as the supply side's concerned, we must get a grip on the markets for social care placements, foster care, social workers and so on. For so long, they've been dominated by profit-seeking businesses, supported by free market evangelists. They're broken markets, these are failing markets. We all know people who are cashing in on the social care market. Markets fail. All markets fail. And children's services, our social services, are a prime example of that. So the supply side of our, our strategy is to recover the provision of our service from this free market exploitation. Exploitation that's socially undesirable and driving our revenue budget into serious deficit. So with a strategy to address the short-term supply issues and an array of initiatives to enhance our communities and the fundamental long-term demand problems. Thank you.
Thanks to councillor Sovers. Got a question, and I've already got a lot of people wanting to speak, so if you keep us a question, so we can get more in, thank you. Councillor Keir, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Bill, for your report. The biggest issue facing this council, Bill, the cost of children's placements. There's very little in your report. I know you alluded to it in your presentation, thank you. But we need to have a relentless focus on this issue if we're ever going to get across the budget deficit. You mentioned market failure in your speech there. I don't think it was mentioned in your report. I would like to know how we are working in the region to address that, what this council is doing with its partners to address that. So that's, that's my first point. And secondly, the performance information, there's quite a bit scattered through the report, which is fine. There's very little context, there's no comparative data, for example. In the corporate parenting board, we are receiving some really good performance data, which looks at our neighbouring authorities and which looks at national performance too. For example, in Dalinton, their numbers of neat children are much lower than ours. So we've asked for some work to be done on that. So I think that sort of information in, in what is an annual report, it's an important report. I think that sort of information would provide a much clearer context. Thank you. They're nothing short of heroic who work in children's services. And we are, we are all very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sovers, please.
Yeah, it, it could have been 10 times as long, couldn't it, the report? That's part of the problem, I think. And I take, I, I think your criticisms are very valid. But I, I've reported, I said this is my first annual report, but I seem to be still up here at almost every council meeting, reporting on, on, on the children's, children's section, whatever, report. And I, I mentioned some of these things in those reports. So I, I felt that would be repetitive really, to talk about the developments of our own children's homes and, and where we, where we're buying homes and developing places. For example, the school in Skinning Grove I've mentioned before, which is going to be developed into places for some of our most serious, seriously handicapped children and so forth. So I, I think that this is coming through in other reports that I've done and through scrutiny. And I, I mean, I just couldn't, there was just wasn't enough space for this here. I wanted to highlight upfront that what was, what future changes, changes might be. So that, that's my not very good answer. Okay?
Thank you. Councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Sovers. And I think you're being very humble on that point, the in-house provision. You're very right, councillor Keir, it's of a massive concern, bringing that cost down. And just to mention the acceleration that you've done in creating, oh, this council has worked with officers on creating in-house provision. And we've accelerated that cycle and we'll start seeing savings next, next year. But I do have a question, Mr Mayor, on this. I met with the LGA last week and the minister, the local government minister, Jim McMahon's created a Reform and Recovery Fund for councils to bid into for exactly that point, creating in-house provision. And they're going to match fund. So we've already, in the budget of for next year forecast, a certain amount of spend to create them spaces, however, to, to save in the long run. And we're currently bidding with, with Danielle now working on a bid to go into that fund, to, to accelerate it further and minimise cost of our revenue. So my question is, councillor Sovers, can you bring us a bit of an update back in, say, three, three months, a quarter? Just how we're getting on with that process? And also, my second question is, the Thrive at Five team, I met them yesterday, and they're doing some fantastic preventative stuff in my ward, Kirkleitham. It's covering five main wards and that's for three years funded. What I'm asking is potentially, are we having conversations with potentially extending that funding so we can keep them for five, seven years and have a real knock-on effect to our future budgets and protecting the future budgets?
Thank you. Councillor Sovers, please.
Right, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I didn't, it's, it's the lack, it's the detail that I think the previous question was about. And I, I did mention when I, in my covering spiel about saving money through placements, through foster care, promoting our own foster carers and through developing our own social workers, for example. So we are aware of, of those, those savings that we're trying to make. But the main one is, of course, on high-cost placements. And there is a team looking at these high-cost placements. You know, we're, we're looking at these regularly, every week we're having meetings about these to see how we can save money on those high-cost placements. And we're developing several children's homes as we go along, which are chipping away at that. There, there are, I think there are, there are two big initiatives. Was it Thrive at Five you were talking about there? Yeah, Thrive at Five, which both, both of these are built, are, are based around this, this part of Redcar, Kirkleitham down to Southbank and Grinestown and so on. And I think the work they do is fantastic. Whether we'll be able to renew it for a longer period of time, I hope we will. But we, you know, we, we, it's a fairly new initiative, this, and we've got to see the outcome. You know, the idea is to make sure that every, all, all different groups in the community are cooperating and working together to ensure that children are ready to start school. Because it's that first bit, isn't it? You know, the first couple of years at school, which set the tone for your old, for their whole school career. And, you know, if you get kids that turn up at school and, and are still in nappies and, and that sort of thing, then it, it's no good. But it's about the whole community pulling together to support those children, the children of our community, if you like. And, and, and you didn't, you didn't mention Shift. I mean, I was surprised last week when I went to that, that launch of Shift. What a big scene it was, you know, I knew it was going to be an interesting initiative. But we've got a lot of people working in, in, in between, in the area between Redcar and Cleveland and Middlesbrough, in that sort of, that region, where they're trying to shift. We've got a lot of social workers working directly, individually, with, with children that are at the most risk and, and trying to change, shift their behaviour. It's a big national campaign. There's a, I've got some, some very eminent backing. The, the chairman of it is, is one of the major consultants at one of the big London hospitals, you know. And as I said, it was a bit of a, bit of a, bit daunting going to that actually last week, speaking there. So these sort of initiatives to help our communities, I think, are really the, the way to address this, the problems in the long term.
Thank you. Councillor Ha, please.
For your report, Bill. And I absolutely applaud your sentiments when you said we are, we are trying to move away from the profit-seeking businesses that we are paying extortionate amounts of money to, who have profit first and children second in their agenda. I haven't really got so much of a question than a statement to welcome Danielle and to thank her from the very short time that you've been with us. You're on the ball with any questions that we're asking and moving forward to reduce this budget and to support the children that we're looking after. And finally, I would just like to see some, some more evidence of work with the SAFE and the Shift initiatives that we're running. Because I, as well as many other people in this room, would say that it's more cost-effective for us as a council to have prevention rather than looking after people in-house. Thank you again, Bill.
Thank you. Councillor Sovers, do you want to come in on that one or?
Yeah, I, I will actually, because I mean, it's something I haven't mentioned really, that you've sort of highlighted. And one of the problems is, we're not the only, we're not the only authority that have got, you know, more children looking for foster care, more children going into high-cost placements and so on. And that's a demand from us, isn't it? And that, so, so of course, the, the providers, the suppliers are, are bidding us against one another. And so, of course, the providers, the suppliers, are bidding us against one another, if you like. We're looking for a place of a child that needs a lot of care, and so Middlesbrough. And so we're both sort of chasing the same suppliers. If you're not careful, we're competing with one another. Excuse me, and bidding the price up. And so there's some attempt at collaboration with other authorities in the North East to try and stop that happening. That's particularly the case with foster carers, you know. We're all looking for additional foster carers and going to the same foster caring agencies, foster care agencies. And so we're trying to break that, stop that profiteering taking place. I won't go into detail about that, but, you know, that's the idea. Yeah, it's great that Danielle's here. I'm sure she's enjoying herself. And I'm sure she's got all the answers that I've been unable to deal with so far. As for reports from Safe and Shift and Thrive at Five, I hope we're going to, well, we do need to bring these through scrutiny to this chamber for people that aren't on those panels. Because, you know, you're quite right. Where we've got to make a difference in the long term is to rebuild these communities, you know. And these initiatives are targeted at trying to do that. And we'll see how successful they are, won't they? They're all fairly new. I mean, the other one that I mentioned right at the start about trying to improve attendance. Attendance, everyone's business, you know, that sort of thing. We'll only find out in time how successful it's been. But these are the key things, you know. Getting kids to attend at school is part of keeping them out of trouble, isn't it? You know, if they're not attending school, they're probably getting into trouble, aren't they, somewhere? Or they're open for exploitation and so on. So these are all initiatives, all working together to try and improve our communities and hence reduce the demand for care and that sort of thing. Okay?
Thank you. councillor Q, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Suthers for your report. In your report, you touched on school capacity, which councils around the borough I know have concerns about. And as you mentioned, it's because of the baby boom in 2008, 2009. Now we've got all these kids coming through the system. My concern is, in Aston, Norm, BTES and Grangestown, Southbank, we really do have some real issues with secondary school capacity. And even within a few years' time, less kids coming through the years, I actually think it's only going to get worse because there's so many new houses being built in the area, which is a good thing. But as has been touched on already in this full council, the Section 106 agreement, which should have been in place, really, for developments like the huge one in Grangestown and Southbank, there is no S106 money. And my concern is, and I'm wondering if you share my concern, specifically in Greater Aston, do you think that in years to come, we have the school capacity we need, given the number of houses being built and so on?
councillor Suthers.
One, isn't it? I mean, the predictions, the predictions are that we will have enough capacity. The problem is that we are kind of not directly in charge of this anymore. We've got to negotiate with the schools, I'm sure you know. And I've got to be careful what I say about this, but there was, I talked to Claire yesterday and she talked to me about one negotiation she was trying to have with a particular school. And that they were wanting to extend their intake by ten places, right? And they wanted us to give them over a million pounds to do that so that they could, to help them to extend the number of places in the school. As I said in the report and as we told, I think it's years eight and nine and maybe a bit of year seven, which have led to the need to bus a lot of people, particularly from the TS6 area, across the borough. I hope that's a temporary thing. I hope that's going to, you know, stop fairly soon. Because we have got low numbers in the primary schools and there is building going on, like there is in many parts of the borough. We predict, the predictions are, that things will work themselves out. And actually, in some parts of the borough, and probably not in the TS6, but perhaps some other parts of the borough, we may find ourselves where the intakes at some primary schools are going to be, you know, too low. So we're going to be stuck with a problem where we've got maybe too many schools. So we'll have to just take it as we go along. But at the moment, it looks like in a year or two, it'll work its way through.
councillor Nightingale. Thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much, councillor Suthers, for your report. It's interesting that you actually mention supply and demand. And they used to be saying that if you could get someone to say supply and demand, you've got an economist. And in the context of supply and demand, I think, in the context of education as well, it's interesting to talk about the old advert that they used to have for Cambridge's Dairy Milk, where they used to say they could put a pint and a half in a single bar of Cambridge's Dairy Milk. Well, education was a bit like that because they were trying to pour more and more and more requirements into education in order to achieve considerable educational objectives. And this report actually illustrates a specific example of this, where the new legislation is increasing the requirement of education. I'll come to the question in a minute. And of course, thanks to the previous Conservative government, the resources available for councils to actually do all the things that they should be doing for children's services have never been really sufficiently adequate. So can councillor Suthers guarantee that his government, with all the new requirements, is going to provide the financial resources that will increase, that would be increasing the requirements on education to fulfil the objectives without actually affecting other services that the council also has to provide? And my second question, councillor Suthers, is, could you give us an update on any developments for the new building for Nunthorpe School? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I thought you'd like the demand and supply stuff. Yeah, I thought you'd like the demand and supply stuff there, you know. Well, let me just talk to you about, let me just mention Nunthorpe School a minute first. Because it's a little bit of a problem Nunthorpe School in that it's right on the edge of Redcar and Cleveland. And, you know, like most schools, they have admissions criteria. And one of the main things is how close you live to the school. So we end up, we've got Nunthorpe School, but because people living in Middlesbrough live closer to the school, some of our children in TS6, and I had one particular parent, I'm really upset about this, contacted me a few months ago, because they didn't live as close to Nunthorpe, although they're in Redcar and Cleveland, they didn't live as close to Nunthorpe School as some people in Middlesbrough. So not only have we got academies that are out of our control, but we've got a lot of other authority that's out of our control. And that, I mean, I don't know the numbers at Nunthorpe School, probably can find out, but I bet half of the numbers come from Middlesbrough, don't they? Middlesbrough's two-thirds. Yeah, well, there you go. So I don't know, but I don't know about the capital programme there. I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to write to you or Danielle's going to have arranged to write to you about that. What about, what about the resources coming from the government? Gosh, that's well beyond my pay grade, isn't it? I mean, I hope so. We all hope so, don't we? You know, there's going to be debates later about that, I'm sure. But it's just, I'm sure that the current government would like to fund all these ideas. I mean, there's a massive number of things there. I had to put it down there because there's such a lot of changes proposed. How are we going to fund them? Well, I hope the government's going to come up with the money, otherwise we'll be writing lots of letters to them, I suppose. But I don't know. I hope so.
Thank you. councillor Ovens, please.
Thank you. Just back in time. It is a vast landscape, councillor Suthers, and it's a very informative report. Just a quick bit of comments and partly questions. Looking at the children in our care, it's a bit like a lot of the reported, some are good results and some aren't quite so good. But I'd like to commend all the work, the good work that the virtual school does and particularly in those initiatives that you mentioned at the three schools. My concern really is about the personnel that we're going to get behind this bill if it comes. We all want to have the wellbeing of our children in mind, but we hear all the time of shortages of teachers, shortages of staff. And with the early years and nursery settings, costs are going up for people who are wanting to work but aren't able to afford the nursery fees because the nursery are having to put their fees up and they're also short-staffed. I think that's going to be quite a problem for us in the years ahead. And I know you won't have an immediate term. You can't have a magic wand. I bet you wish you did. So I think that's the, it's really just expressing the concerns about retention of staff and also looking ahead. Because I know we're doing a little bit of joint work with, from the adult to smooth that transition from children's services where they need help into adult. But it's a worrying trend that more young people are getting education healthcare plans. And I'm not quite sure what the reason is. I think it may start right at the very beginning for some of them, when they come into school and because they've not had the interaction with their parents and there's a lot of tablets around and phones around and everything, they come in and they have very poor speech. But that's just me thinking a bit laterally. But I do look forward to working with children's services and making that transition as smooth as it possibly can be. Thank you, councillor Suthers.
Thank you. councillor Suthers, please.
I'm going to say kink, and I think Danielle's going to be along like Queen Canute, trying to fight back again all the time. You know, we're battling to deal with a problem that's getting worse and worse and overwhelming at times, isn't it? And as I say, a barometer for that is the number of children in our care. But there's a whole iceberg, you know, it's like an iceberg of problems underneath that as well. And that's why we need to address things in our community, as I mentioned, a number of issues in relation to that. I mean, the wellbeing of our children and a good start for them in education. What could be more important than that? You know, that is the foundation for building our communities and our societies as we go along. And, you know, if, and it's, if we've got Thrive at Five, which I've mentioned a couple of times now, I hope everybody's going to look it up, rush to look it up afterwards. If that works, you know, if we can get the start right, then hopefully that'll reduce, that'll reduce the EHC plans. That's the idea. And the work at family hubs, you know, the enhancement of support and initiatives through the family hubs, it's also designed to help at that very early stage. So there are a whole plethora of strategies which are there to help children at the very start of life. And I think that's crucial, isn't it, to make sure that problems don't crop up later on? But it's a slow burner. It's not something that's going to solve our budget deficit problem in the short term. So it's fundamental, but it'll take a while to feed through. There are some signs of it, you know, the number of registrants coming into the match, the number of cases coming into the front door has fallen this year. It's in the report there. So that is a positive sign. So that's on a downward trend. And then some of the other measures, some of the other parameters will improve as well.
Thank you. councillor Hannover, please. Sorry, no, councillor Pauley, sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. councillor Suthers, thank you for your report. The multi-agency children's hub, the MAC, I visited Daisy Lane. Brilliant place, fantastic people, all doing a very good job in difficult circumstances. But until I became a councillor, I'd never heard of this. Unless you work for the council or an agency which deals with the MAC, it's likely you've never heard of it yourselves. Four residents in my ward have contacted me with concerns for a child and asked, how do we go about reporting these concerns? I've instructed them to look up the MAC on Redcar and Cleveland digital pages. They've come back to me with comments such as, phone line is confusing, just straight to music. I don't know how. I want to be anonymous. It's too difficult, too many questions, hard to navigate. I tried after work but it closed. I'll do it later. Will you do it for me? My point is, there are children out there living in concerning circumstances that are difficult for us to imagine and we are missing opportunities to help them. I know the biggest burden on the council finances is children and families. But a previous officer in this area admitted to me that we only reach the tip of the iceberg. I visited a local library where there was no information available that could be picked up regarding this service. You have to ask a member of staff who will look it up for you and find the details online. You must remember, not everyone in our society is computer savvy. Referrals have gone down because we have streamlined the process from the services. It is concerning, there is no mention of referrals from members of public. There are no less children abused, neglected or abandoned in society. We have posters in public and licensed premises in regard to Ask for Angela campaign. Should we not be displaying information on how to help children who we have concerns for? Should we not be signposting through leaflets to parents in our schools? Should we not be publicising this multi-agency hub through social media campaign Redcar and Cleveland-wide? Or do we continue to hide the MAC agency in the shadows, pretend it's not happening and only deal with the tip of the iceberg? I look forward to working with Danielle, Director of Children's Services. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Suthers, please.
I agree with a lot of what you're saying there. We maybe need to improve on this, don't we? We need to think of, it needs to be part of our strategy, and Danielle's listening, of course, that we improve the marketing side things. I don't think it just only applies to children, actually. I think it probably applies to adults as well. You know, we were in the meetings, talked about that earlier. So I think it's something that we need to think about and improve on. So I know that's not a great answer, but I'm agreeing with you. So that's probably good, isn't it? I also agree, it's only the tip of the iceberg. I think I've just mentioned that, talked to somebody else's answer there. You know, there's a lot going on underneath and it's really worrying, this increase in organised crime that we're seeing in our borough at the moment. That's a real worry for us. As far as the match is concerned, I mean, I think, again, there's a section about it. I think the important, when I was there last, I was talking to DCS, the police, DCS, Detective Sergeant, the police boss lady, Nick, and she, what we're saying really, discussing that, you know, the police need to be better trained, actually. You know, how we deal with our, the other groups, you know, schools, health, police and so on. I think all that needs to be, we need a lot more cooperative working along there because I think the police are often, you know, you talk about general public responding, I think the police, I know I'm a little bit off it, but the police are often the first people there when they see that a child is in need. And they need to be spotting that this child's in need rather than dealing with the domestic dispute that's going on in the foreground. They need to be looking for the child in the background and whether there's possibly some care need there as well. So I think there are all sorts of things that can be improved. But I think that the match itself does quite a good job. I think we need to maybe think about how we publicise it more and we'll take that away and have a look at it. Thanks.
Thank you. councillor Hannover, please. Final speaker.
Job was my first ever council meeting. I thought, nobody told me I had 10 minutes. I was just getting started and Mayor Brenda Foster told me to wind up. Thank you. Two education issues, uh, please. Um, first of all, uh, your, your report starts with the new children's well being bill. Thank you for introducing that to the council. There, there is a lot in it that's basically tweaking, but there is one fantastic thing, which is the uh, free breakfast clubs in every primary school. I think that will do more good in closing or helping to close the, uh, attainment gap than all the other measures put together. But I'm quite disappointed about the tweaking they've done with Ofsted. I mean, it is good that they can look at more independent schools and that they can judge multi-academy trust as a whole rather than just their individual schools. But that's quite a small thing, don't you think, in comparison with the fact that nobody in the education system, nobody in the social care system and nobody in the childcare system trusts Ofsted, even the slightest bit. Um, and that it surely must be time to wind it up and create a more streamlined system with inspectors drawn from a wider pool. Because ex-head teachers don't necessarily make very good Ofsted inspectors. So if you get to go to the Department of Education, will you, will you tell them that, please? And, um, also moving on to education in, in our own borough. Clearly, the level of suspensions and exclusions is absolutely staggering and it keeps going up. And I know in, in normal report language, it's described in your report as a challenge, but actually it's completely indefensible. I don't know how they get away with it. You know, if, if we go to see a doctor, we expect them to be an expert in the human body. If we go to see a lawyer, we expect them to be experts in the law. So surely the schools that we send our children to are supposed to be experts in children's minds, even the difficult ones. They, they should know how to do that. And I think at the moment taxpayers are paying billions to these private corporations for a substandard service. You know, even in the old dilapidated, perhaps rather under ambitious local authority schools. The, the children almost all turned up, very few of them had mental health problems. And if you saw them coming out of school, they still had some life left in them, whereas now they seem to look exhausted and pale and, and rather worried. So as I said before, if you get to go to the, uh, education department, uh, will you tell that it's time to wind up Ofsted? And will you lobby for yourself, um, and your department to have much more say in what goes on in schools in Redcar and Cleveland?
Thank you. Councillor Silas, please.
Yeah, um, I was, I was listening to a debate about the free breakfast, you know, the, uh, free breakfast clubs at schools and so on. And somebody said, well, why are we giving it universally to every, everybody? And I thought, well, I, I suspect that some, some children, you know, who, who are from deprived families need that as the best meal of the day. And I thought, well, you know, it's a good start to, to, to learning and very important. Uh, but I, I suspect that some, some parents who are working rush out and can't give the kids a good breakfast as well. You know, they rush dump the kids off at the school or something like that. So I think it, it, it's, it's a good idea actually to make it a universal thing and it can become a bit of a social thing as well. I'm no expert on that, so I, that's, that's just my thoughts, thoughts on it. Ofsted, whoa, well, I, I'll be careful what I say about Ofsted. I, 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 I think that, uh, they seem to measure all sorts of things that they think are important, whether they're the right things or not. Uh, I don't know. Again, it's a little bit above my pay grade. I'll have to think about that. If I do get to the, but, you know, if I do get to the Department of, uh, Education or, 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 uh, uh, I do, I, I do bump into Bridget Phillips or something like that, uh, maybe I should ask her about that. Uh, but I'll have to have a think about that one. Uh, the level of suspensions, it's outrageous, isn't it? You know, it's outrageous. We, we don't have a, you know, we don't have direct control over, over, uh, uh, these academies, do we? Anymore. Uh, but there seems to be a sort of, 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 particularly I think it's since, since Covid and blame that, I don't, don't know why, but if you look at the figures, that's the case. People seem a bit blasé about attendance at school. You know, I, I actually talked to my wife in the car this morning. She said, my, my, our parents used to say, oh, you say, oh, I don't feel up to school. Oh, you'll be all right when you get there, won't you? And throw you out of the door. Uh, nowadays, kids, uh, our grandkids seem to have a little bit of a sniffling, the, 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 the missing school for a day. It's outrageous. I don't know all I can to get those children to school anyway. Uh, but, you know, so, some of our, some of the academy, there, there is one, one, one sector of school in, 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 out, in Redcar and Cleveland that's got dramatically high suspensions. And, uh, and, and, and they, they have a plan to address that, that we're negotiating with them about. And really, we need, need to be negotiating with all schools, particularly that one. Okay?
Thank you. Well, thanks for the report. Uh, I think moving on to the report of the governance director, monitor officer. Andrew, you take an app.
Yes, this is just the standard report basically, but, um, same as always and it's, uh, in relation to proportionality and the review of disapproving seats. So it's been circulated. I don't propose to go into it. Um, Chair, we just need a proposal in a second and then hopefully we'll be approved. Sorry, I was just saying it's a, a review of proportionality, the report. Um, it's a standard report. I don't propose to read it. Um, it's, then every time there's a change. Um, so hopefully Chair, there'd be a proposal in a second and then it'll be approved to a vote.
Thank you. We have a second, yeah? Andrew, you can add something.
Oh, you might, you might need, you give me two seconds to consult with my demoservices colleague to prepare the report before I can answer that, so give me a minute.
I let, I let Andrew answer, yeah?
Of proportionality, basically. Um, so it would be better for a decision now.
Was it, that was a different agenda item? This is different. Andrew, get the answers.
Um, sorry, the, the, the answer is, this is just simply whether vouches have arisen due to changes in proportionality. So by election basically or, um, changes in, um, membership of parties.
Is that all right? Yeah? Yeah? Have you got all of us in favour? Yeah? Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah. Carry, thank you. Sorry, councillor Hannover. Is it a point of order or is it?
It's on the proportionality because it includes seating in the, in the chamber, doesn't it, this report?
No, that's on number twelve.
Ah, sorry, I've, I've stood up for the chair. Sorry.
Yeah. Right, I look my screen, make sure no one else wants, right. Right, that's carried, so thanks for that. Right, moving on to motions, yeah? Come on, councillor, yeah?
I'm an old age pensioner and, uh, that was meant to be funny. You can all have a laugh. And you, you, you're probably, you're probably so astounded to think that I am one. Uh, I, I did consult, uh, Mr. Newton about motions two and three. And he advised me, of course, I'm not advising anybody else, that I should declare an interest in these, this matter, which I'm doing so now with motion two and three. But, uh, but that I could also, because it's a sort of general issue, I could speak and vote on those matters.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I'd like that to be recorded.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, no problem. Right, moving on into motion one. Councillor Leroy to, uh, move by councillor Leroy.
Just before we do that, just to clarify then, do, does every pensioner need to fill out the declaration of interest form or are we letting that go? Just to make sure that we're doing this correctly.
It's up to everyone individually, but, uh, everybody's entitled to the interview allowance. It's a matter, it's a universal matter. It's a bit like council tax, you all pay council tax, but you don't declare it.
Or no?
Yeah, it's, they don't have to declare it, no. They don't have to declare it, no.
Right, okay.
Go on.
Right, so motion one, um, it's moved, moved by myself. So this council reverses the undemocratic, potentially unlawful and secretive decision made by officers on the twenty fifth of July twenty twenty four not to defend the appeal lodged by Taylor Wimpy and Earl of Ronaldshire at the planning inquiry for our twenty twenty three zero one eight one FFM, which is the land of Jason Silverdale Gardens on October, eighth of October, um, twenty twenty four. I just want to point out some things about this right at the very start. So costs is not a legal grounds for de facto removal and defence of an appeal. There is nu- there are numerous cases available. Um, here are just three of them. Um, one from ninety five, one from as far back as nineteen eighty one. In fact, the most modern case in Supreme Court is from two years ago, which says you can't use costs as a reason to approve or not defend. So we are in the realms of unlawfulness. Indeed, this motion coming today is peculiar in nature because it's about a planning condition or a planning decision. And when the regulatory body makes a decision, the regulatory committee being quasi judicial, that decision stands. Now, here, we're not talking about the merits of the case and that's why the motion has been allowed. Here, we're talking about something else. We're not talking about costs. We're not talking about whether we want the development or whether we don't want the development. All of these arguments are inadmissible because we can't talk about the merits of the planning case. But what we can talk about is the action not to defend and whether we agree with that or we don't agree with that. And the reason why I'm saying that we shouldn't agree with that and we should be defending the case is because that decision was made by an officer unilaterally and wasn't made by fellow councillors. And by doing that, the separation of powers between those who make the decisions and then those who carry out the decisions has been broken. The democratic principle that you are elected and accountable for the actions of this council to the electorate has been broken as we did not make that decision. And this was being confirmed in an FOI release where the Chair of the Planning Committee wrote to the monitoring officer, whatever you should decide, stick. So it is in writing and I put that into the public domain and it's available on the internet. Now, this is about a decision that was made on the twenty second of December by the Regulatory Committee to reject the proposal. The grounds for the rejection are immaterial to what we are discussing here. Because we cannot decide a planning case, we are not the Regulatory Committee. However, in that meeting, I gave a number of policy and legal points. I was an objector on the DA for background. And the reason was because the developer didn't want me to be on the panel on that day as part of the committee. They wrote an email to officers to say, to remove me and I stood in the objectors. So I wasn't one of those people who voted on this. So I don't have a conflict of interest in that respect. Because I personally haven't been overruled. Fourteen other members of this council have been overruled. It's interesting as well that in terms of the, um, the merits and costs of this case being secondary, we should also consider that it is secondary in terms of the gravity of this matter before us. Because this is about whether you, as a councillor, are accountable to the electorate for decisions. Should we not go to appeal and not defend? Then it is not on those fourteen people on the Regulatory Committee at that point. It is on a one individual officer. But again, the democratic point is this, we rise and fall based on our decisions. We selected the people and I didn't agree with the people who were selected there. You remember that I didn't agree with it. But those people were democratically selected by the people here. Indeed, thirty people of this room on, at the AGM can decide. And then you can decide whether you swap or don't for that particular day. It's a democratic decision. What isn't a democratic decision is that one officer then comes in after the fact and then changes that decision without consulting the body. And that that body was quasi judicial and that the decision stands whether we like it or not. Costs or not, because that's immaterial and we can't decide that here today. And then finally, in terms of whether we like the grounds or not, we rise and fall by those decisions. And so as such, I'm putting forward this motion that today we will decide. And the point is this, are we happy for an officer to make a decision that councillors should be making? And I am saying we should not be happy because the democratic accountability stops with us. And we should take back control, to use somebody else's phrase. I will move this motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Thank you. Moment of debate, uh, councillor Brown, please.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Tristan. Excellent, excellent, uh, claim to the gallery as always. Uh, the, the facts, uh, I called, you made some serious, oh, sorry, some serious allegations were made in this chamber last council meeting. And on the back of them serious allegations, we've got a different, uh, monitoring officer and, uh, solicitor sat in the, the chambers today as the inquiry is yet to run its course. Uh, I think it would have been very prudent because you make a number of assumptions in your speech there. If you'd have waited until the inquiry had taken place before potentially, now you're talking about cost. Earlier on, you, you spoke about the burden to the taxpayer, okay? And you were very passionate in the way you put that across. Now, potentially, if we were to vote for this motion today, uh, along with the additional, uh, sorry, the five hundred thousand, the King's barrister and from the King's Chamber, uh, told the monitoring officer and when he made his be- this decision, you're talking about his decision. And if it's based on some of the factors, uh, of cost and potential winning or losing, then we have to discuss that when it comes to this, uh, this, this motion. Uh, to, to, to suggest we can't, uh, discuss that or we shouldn't is ridiculous. Because that's what he's based his decision around. Uh, a- again, but I shall wait until the inquiry, until I know a lot more of the information. Uh, you make a number of claims, which I read the King's barrister legal advice and I brought it to your public meeting for you to ring out and read out to the people in the, in the hall. And I think you said it was too long and boring to do so, uh, if I remember rightly. Uh, ninety-five percent chance of losing at a cost of around half a million pounds. Today, if we were to agree this motion before the inquiry has run its course, this motion should have came after the inquiry. And you'd had the results of that inquiry. So we were, everybody was voting, knowing exactly what we were voting on and whether any malpractice had or not taken place would cost an additional around four hundred thousand pounds. So we're talking about of a cost to the taxpayer with a ninety-five percent chance of potentially losing of just under a million pound. Now, that is a burden to the taxpayer. It's also given false hope to the people of Mask repeatedly and this is what we need to manage. I personally voted against the development twice because I don't think it was the ideal place for it. Uh, my personal opinions are my personal opinions. However, we are guided by law. And you, you've already made some really serious allegations on this, Tristan, and you have to let the inquiry run its course. So I, I just cannot support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm actually, uh, interested in the, the wording of the motion. Uh, I understand it has been approved to be tabled. And therefore, I am concerned that the description of potentially unlawful has been allowed to be incorporated in the wording. So could we have, uh, some legal guidance as to whether or not that decision
Yeah, I'll put you on.
potentially unlawful and how it could be?
Yes, we, we don't have any right to reject motions, um, uh, if it affects the council or things that council have responsibilities or powers, um, to do, then that the council have responsibilities or powers to do, then we have to accept the motion generally. As to whether it's potentially unlawful and secretive, obviously, that's secret. It's a subjective thing. We have advice about its lawfulness. I believe there's an investigation ongoing, so I won't comment on that. But we've accepted the wording as it is. So unless somebody wants to propose to amend that wording, that's the wording we're voting on.
Okay, thank you. Move on. Councillor Argreaves, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I brought this to the council last time, and I'm not going to speak too highly on it, because obviously we've been through it all before. But I echo what Councillor Leroy said about, it's not about the merits of the case today, it's about the Regulatory Committee. So obviously, each of our groups, we select the people we think will go into this committee and look at the facts and not make any prejudgments. And obviously, on the day, they found that they didn't agree with the plan application as it was, and it got rejected. So for me, I don't, it doesn't sit right with me that as a council, we don't support that decision our councils made, and again, for the residents, because I'm getting contact by residents all the time about this, that they don't feel very supported by the council. So even they're gonna, they plan to go to the inquiry and make their case, but they find it very difficult with the council not working together with them. So that is why today I will be supporting Councillor Leroy's motion.
Thank you. Councillor Clark, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a bit confusing, because I think now we're asking for legal advice on legal advice, aren't we? The blunt question I've got, does this council chamber have the authority to reverse that decision?
The legal position on that's unclear, and it would be a matter for the planning inspector to, whether or not they took it into account. That's all I can say. There would be a cost implication if this was passed and the planning inspector took issue with it.
No, but I mean, it's just a yes or no question. I mean, does this motion today, if passed, have the power to reverse that initial decision? It's all I want to know.
It's not completely clear. We've got advice to say no, but it's not clear. So it would be for the planning inspector to decide, not me.
All right, okay. Moving on. Councillor Kerr, please.
My mic working up? Okay. It's probably right that the Ward Council has brought this motion today. It gives a voice to their residents in this chamber. Though there are limits as to what councillors are able to do for their residents, we must take the advice of the monitoring officer who has delegated powers to make the decision that he made. We must listen to legal counsel that tells us this appeal has no defence. We must safeguard all of our residents against huge costs, so huge in fact, that they potentially mean half a percent on everyone's council tax. It is incumbent on us all to proceed in a level-headed way that protects our residents from unnecessary additional financial burden, particularly within the current climate. The council cannot possibly support this motion, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. Suge Mead, can we have the audience quiet, please? Thank you. If you want to speak, there's a process for the people, the audience, to speak at some point in the meeting. That hasn't been taken up. So if you're in the gallery, please, can you remain silent, please? Councillor Davies, please.
Oh, you just pressed my button. Top of the list. Must be getting some priority from the leader. Right, I am torn generally. I mean, you know, this has been a bit of a silence that's been going on for quite some time. Although I've got great sentiment with Councillor Leroy's motion, I mean, I'm probably one of the biggest advocates in this chamber when it comes to when councillors make a decision, councils should stand by that decision that it is made. And if fourteen councillors have made a decision to appeal or to go to a committee or whatever it is that it's doing, I can't even remember now, an inquiry, and the council should be standing up for the council's decision. That's what councillors are supposed to do, and that's what residents expect of their councillors, is to make a decision based on their interests, I suppose. You know, a council has made a decision, and we should be respectful of that. At no point should officers be changing that decision. And in my view, the fact that this has been done in such a way to undermine a council, which is us, you know, fifty-nine councillors, we make decisions, we should be respected on the decisions that we take. But then, on the other hand, I completely agree with the last speaker. You know, I under, I mean, the reason why I don't get involved in planning at all, I mean, I can say it, because I don't go to planning committee meetings ever, because I think the process and everything else that goes into it is so backward in the way that councils' arms are twisted up the hands around the back, around the back by government policy, by planning legislation. We sometimes have to make decisions, which again is why I don't like to do them, with our hands behind our back, because we can't make a decision and stand by it, because there's so much in the background that stops you and prevents you from making that decision. At the same time, I'm respectful of the fact that the burden that goes on to our council taxpayers, if we are unable to successfully defend against the inquiry, now that is the crucial part here. If we are unsuccessful, there is a cost burden to the taxpayers in this borough. However, if we are successful, we don't know, because if we're not going to defend ourselves, then we're never gonna know. But the fact that fourteen councillors have asked for that to be done puts you in a bit of a catch-22 situation, because you're basically, and this is the whole problem with the planning system throughout the country, you're putting us in a difficult position of knowing the costs if we go to a planning inspector's decision and he turns against us and we've then got to pay it. The burden comes to our taxpayer, which is probably why it's designed in that way, so that the decisions that get made by us, in essence, either cost us or that we have to make them because we can't, we can't defend against it, because we know, everyone knows, all these big companies know that we can't defend against it because we can't afford to do it. No council, apart from Westminster probably, could possibly defend against these big companies. So it's a difficult one for me. I still am unsure about which way to vote, because ultimately councillors have made a decision, and I'm completely respectful of the fact that when councillors make a decision, as a council, we should respect that decision. But being placed in that, in that situation of having to look at the bigger picture for our residents, sort of leaves me a bit torn. And I'm sorry, but I don't know yet either which way. But allow me a few minutes to listen to other speakers, seeing as I've got in quite early and I've gone to the top of the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Hanawer, please.
There's no doubt that Councillor Leroy had made a very powerful speech, but I think if we were to set a precedent whereby full council overturned the decision, particular decisions by particular officers, the life of the council would become very difficult. It would have to be a change in the system. For example, we, Saltburn councillors, disagree with the decision that was made on Marine Parade about the parking, decision made by Mr. Archer. So I could therefore bring a motion to council, asking the council to overturn that decision. Other councillors would know that. They would no doubt bring their own motions on decisions they wanted overturned by particular officers. I think for this to be changed, it would have to be a change in our system whereby we say, you know, the legal officer should not make this decision without democratic input, and that would have to be a cabinet report which would go through the system in the usual way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hanawer. Councillor Martin, please, final speaker.
I was on the committee who dealt with the situation right at the beginning. I was the member who put the motion forward to obviously decline the application. Then I was obviously advised, begin this year, would I support the council in going to court to fight this case against obviously the building company, which I totally agreed to, because I agree with my decision. I agree that what we discussed on that day was the right decision. But then we found out that we were going to fight it, and the amount of money it was going to cost the council if we lost, and we had a ninety-five percent chance of losing. So for me, it's like, we're in a rock and a hard place. It's going to be a precedent if we fight it and lose. But then we also set the precedent of, we're there. Every decision we make, can the building companies go, well, if they didn't fight this, we'll fight him anyway, because they're not going to fight. So now, I'm stuck right in the middle. I don't know what to do for the best, and that's the God's honest truth.
Thank you. Councillor Leroy, do you want to sum up, please?
I'll leave the personal bickering out of that, out of this, Councillor Brown. Just in terms of the costs, the costs is, again, it's unlawful to mention costs. You mentioned something about it being too boring to read them out. I actually did read them out the last council meeting. So for example, the Tadcaster versus North Yorkshire County Council, where it talked about costs being immaterial to the planning decisions and the matter of the fact. Finney versus Welsh Ministers, again, a 2019 case, which again was exactly the same thing, that costs are external, it's due with the plan merits itself. And again, another one here from the Wirral, R versus Wirral regarding hotel, again, financial costs should not be part of the material decision. The next point there was with regards to the costs overall. I mean, the cost to the taxpayers being, and this again, can't be used as a grounds. So costs is unlawful. That's the whole point in the motion, right? But anyway, in terms of it, the £400,000 is only a fraction of what we cost. So the councillors cost three million every four years, and I didn't have many much support from this council chamber when I was saying reduce us by a third. And then again, we supported for a swimming pool to be built and for us to use seven million pounds out of reserves to facilitate that particular swimming pool. So it's a case of the costs seem rather different in different arguments. What I, but there was a very good question there for Councillor Clark, and that was with regards to if the motion is passed. So there was a planning decision that was made by Redcar and Cleveland. The monitoring officer didn't overturn the decision, removed the apparatus to defend. So that's what they've done, and that's why we're not overturning the planning decision. The planning decision stays, but the difference is that three or four residents from that particular community now are defending this case, and we've thrown them into the lion's lair with barristers from a development firm. So that's the action that's been taken there. It's the beggar thy neighbour principle. And then the next, the next thing as well is that in terms of by not defending, it's a de facto removal. So can you imagine, you go to court and you are the victim of a crime, and before you go in, you just say, all right, I'm going to remove my whole legal team and I'll just go in? That's exactly the situation here. In fact, we're the defendant, it's worse. So you're innocent of a crime that you've alleged to have committed, and then you remove all of your defence before you go in. It's akin to the same scenario that we're looking at. But we are overturning a decision that's been made by a quasi judicial body, and we're allowing one officer to do so. And that, for me, is the principle of this. It's whether we're in charge of our own fate and whether we trust those people that we appoint onto that committee to make the decisions, because unfortunately, they haven't made a decision in this case. And that's why I'm asking you to support this motion. The costs is secondary. The costs are not as exorbitant as they're being made out to be, and the costs will only occur, and they are unlawful, will only occur if should the developer push for costs. And there's no sign that they would do that necessarily. So it's been used as an argument. So please support the motion, support local democracy.
Thank you. Going to put to the vote, all those in favour of the motion, please show. Shush. Right. All those against? Quiet, please. Can we quiet? Right, can we, please, can we have some quiet, please? I'll have to ask you to leave, sorry. Right, can we have, can we have the gallery move, please? Can we have them, please? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Right, sorry, what was it? I missed that. Right, six fourth, thirty-two against? No, no abstention. So the motion is not carried. Thank you. Right, moving on to motion number two. Councillor Morgan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moving this motion on the winter fuel payment. And Councillor Kerr will be taking it as a second, I believe. And this is in a, the object of that is so that we're only debating this the once in this one motion. So the announcement to restrict winter fuel payments to only those receiving pension credits or other benefits is deeply concerning. In Redcar and Cleveland, the number of pensioners affected is over 25,000. Many of these will be just above the threshold and really struggle to heat their homes this winter. Cutting these payments to people already struggling to get by is wrong. These are payments which protect many from having to choose between heating and eating. And in addition, the energy cap has just risen by 10% and could rise again in January. There has been no proper assessment of the risks of restricting the payments or the extent of the adverse impact on those who will lose them, what it will mean for their health and wellbeing this winter. And the government's claim that the April increase in state pension will compensate for this cut is quite unhelpful, because it won't help anyone through this winter, and it won't benefit to the extent suggested, if they are on the old state pension, for example, or if they don't qualify for a full state pension. It is nevertheless also important to do everything to improve the take-up of pension credit by raising awareness, but also helping people to work through that 24-page application form for them to make a successful application. And so therefore, this council resolves to, and I'm reading directly from the paper now, instruct the managing director to write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, calling for the policy on linking winter fuel payments to pension credit receipt to be immediately paused and introduce a new threshold to develop eligibility for winter fuel payments. Council further requests the managing director to write to all MPs covering Redcar and Cleveland, asking them to give their formal support or halting changes to the winter fuel payment eligibility. Secondly, request all group leaders within Redcar and Cleveland sign a joint letter to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, calling for the new winter fuel payment policy to be suspended and reviewed. And thirdly, Redcar and Cleveland Council to urgently commence a significant awareness campaign to maximise uptake of pension credits. This will include use of council notice boards, social media, promotion in local press, and targeted letters to those who may be eligible.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please? Thank you. Motion two is open for debate. I've got, is that? Right, we can. Yeah, get the monitoring officer come in, yeah?
I would propose perhaps that you decline to move this, the next motion, if this is agreed, and then it can be. and then it can fail and we can move on.
Yes, thank you, that was my advice from the monitoring officer. When we have this debate and it's supported, then we'll withdraw the very similar motion that follows on. Yeah?
We have to deal with this, with this, this one before we move on to the next one, and then we have to look at that then. That's the advice I've been given. I'll get the monitoring officer come in.
Well, I think we've just got agreement from councillor Kershaw, she will decline to move that next motion on the basis that this is. Well, we'd have to have them accepted as motions beforehand, so. Yeah, well, they'd have to be accepted beforehand, so it'd be obvious what was happening then. Then the next one won't be moved and it'll fail, and then we'll move on.
Okay then, we're clear as mud, yeah? Right, got a second there, yeah, so open to debate, so we got councillor Leroy, please.
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment, please. Okay, so if we remove the first line just as far as government, and we replace that line with, Redcar and Cleveland Council recognises that all three major political parties in the UK are responsible for supporting austerity, and that has decimated the national economy and has led to the newly elected, and then we'll start at the word government, and then if we go further down, my next proposal is to remove, so where we've got instruct the managing director to write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer, calling for, and I would like that replacing with, call on the government to reinstate the winter fuel payments in four. And I'm looking for a second, please.
Sorry, I need a second, and I need, in writing, please, a motion. Got a second to come for you. Is everyone clear on that, then? Is everyone clear? Everyone in writing? Right, we need it in writing, yeah, we'll have to take a recess, I'll get it written.
You need to see it in full, you need to see it in full in all its glory, this one.
Yeah, we're going to have to recess then while we get it written, sorry guys. I'll just give you a couple of minutes to read the amendment and we'll get started again, yeah, all right? Couple of minutes, yeah?
So, you up there? I'm going for a second.
Right, has everyone had a chance to read? Everyone ready to start again? Right then, we'll get started again. The debates on the motion, the amendment in front of you. So next to speak, I've got councillor Brown. He withdrawn, okay, do you want, turn your mic off, man.
Well, can I just move, we've got the vote on this amendment?
Yeah, okay, you can go. Oh, I've got people wanting to speak, I've got councillor Clark next, if you want to speak on this. Oh, okay. Have you got a second there for that to the? Yeah, right, okay. We'll go straight to the vote then, or do you? Yeah. Right, we're voting, we're voting to go to the vote, if you know what I mean, yeah, yeah. So we're voting to go to the vote. Yeah, 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 that's the advice I've got. So we're voting to go to the vote, all those in favour? Yeah. Yeah. One amendment, yeah? We're voting for the vote. I think it's carried, I mean, right, right, so we're going to go straight to the vote, yeah?
One amendment, yes.
Yeah, no, 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 someone up now, no? Someone up? Yeah, someone up, yeah, yeah, so councillor Leroy, you can sum up on the, before we vote the vote, yeah?
And councillor Hanoa there was, would I have proposed this if I'd have still been with the Liberal Democrats? I tell you what, I wouldn't have been able to propose it, but I'd have voted for it. And I think you've seen how I vote, I vote with my own conscience, and the Liberal Democrats' shameful support of austerity in 2010 to 2015, and how that has caused a concatenation of decline in this area. You're absolutely responsible for this. Yes, you don't like hearing it, but it's absolutely relevant. So, I just want to run through, I'm going to sum up now, so if we think about this motion and we think about the individuals affected by the winter fuel payment. So, I just want to run through, I'm going to sum up now, so, if we think about this motion and we think about the, uh, individuals affected by the winter fuel payments and this spiral of decline that Liberal Democrats and Conservatives started and Labour are continuing. We should also think about the disabled person with no daycare. We should think about now, the single mother with no support to go into further education. The talented sixth former who will no longer go to university, who can't afford the fees anymore. The sixty-year-old former steel worker waiting eighteen months for a hip replacement. We could consider the third child who goes hungry as child benefit was removed. We could consider the person, and we know, everyone knows someone like this in our ward, who waits for a bus that doesn't turn up because the services have been cut right back, or the bus doesn't come at all, like at the top of Mask now. We could think about the, the mid-forties couple who will never afford a home, for example, because their standard of living has, has decreased. We could think about the victims of crime who never have a police response, have been there. And now we're going to have to think about the pensioner who will sit in the dark as a result of austerity, who won't be able to afford the heating. And it's the responsibility of what Bill Suthers called neoliberal economics and free market dogma. And it's not our position as councillors to be supporting that. That is the decision made by those who go into Parliament, and they can affect those decisions. And they have these blind allegiances, red, blue, orange, that goes above and beyond their personal beliefs. And what I think we should do is send a strong message that we stand with the people of the area, not by political colours, and we oppose austerity in all its forms. And therefore, not only the pension fuels should be reinstated in full, and not those points that have been raised as some kind of technocratic solution, but we should also send a message that we oppose austerity. Because this government coming in had promised an end to austerity, and unfortunately, it's in full vigour.
Right, thank you, we'll go straight to the vote then. All those in favour of the amendment, please show. Yeah, but, obviously we went straight to the vote and councillor Lee Roy's, yeah, so he summed up, that's right, yeah. Right, all those who, yeah, that's all right, yeah. So was everyone else as well, because we went straight for the vote. Right, so, all those in favour of the amendment, please show. Is that two, three?
Three.
Three, yeah, all those against? That's defeated. Right, we'll go back now to the original motion, uh, from councillor Morgan, uh, please. Uh, have you got a list of speakers? Right, I've got councillor Clark first, please.
Right, thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I refuse to declare a point of personal interest on the grounds of age discrimination. All right. Right, so, I need another pair of glasses, anybody know where I can get a pair? I don't know. Um, now, here's me believing in a pre-election Labour's manifesto, it, it was supposed to be fully costed. So, I don't know, you missed twenty billion pounds and you're in charge of the accounts, it's, it's absolutely incredible, but let's move on. Look, I've received an email, you've got to trust me on this, from a whistleblower of a printing firm who says they have refused to print this year's Christmas card from the Labour Party. The whistleblower describes the scene of the local card they wanted to print of a woman and a man. Now, let's just say their names, be Anna and Luke. And in a Dickensian scene, stood in front of a roaring log fire. And next to it, the largest Christmas tree with hundreds of light bulbs of the highest energy usage. The two figures, now remember, the names could be Anna and Luke, are holding in one hand a big turkey leg, and in the other, a glass of warm mulled wine. They're dressed in Dickens' costumes from the novel A Christmas Carol, simulating the Scrooge character. And at the top of the card is printed, "Time for change. Ho, 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 Merry Christmas, suckers." Well, I hope they have a Merry Christmas, tucked up in their nice warm homes, eating a hearty Christmas dinner, while some of the residents who they're supposed to represent and not their party may not so eat so well and could freeze their proverbial Christmas nuts off due to their vote to withdraw the winter fuel payment to some of our most needy residents. I fully support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway, please.
Very much, Mr Mayor. This cut reminds me of the difficult days of the Labour Party between 2015 and nineteen, when people like me were told we couldn't possibly have that old duffer Jeremy Corbyn in charge. Not a serious leader, too left, too hippie, too ignorant of the real world, he won't listen, he's a fantasist, he's too naive, but he's also too old. How will he cope with a twenty-four-hour news cycle? We must put the grown-ups back in charge. Well, so, now the grown-ups, so-called grown-ups are in charge, and how are they doing? Well, Starmer and Reeves immediately decide they need to look tough, they need to show the markets, they can make tough decisions. Like their idol Tony Blair when he reduced benefits to single mothers in ninety-seven. Who shall we pick on, they say? Not the wealthiest, after all, where would we get our freebies from? I know the people who don't vote for us, the elderly. Shall we do an impact study first? No. So, they didn't discover, because they didn't do the impact study, that this cut affects mainly the over-eighties, many of whom still live in this windy nation's drafty housing stock. Ten million people, each of them have four or five close relatives, what a great way to make forty million people angry. But they're not really angry yet. If Starmer and Reeves are unlucky as well as heartless, this might be a very cold winter. In which case, every extra death will be hung round their necks like the mariners' albatross. And all this at a time when they've been revealed to feel very entitled indeed about receiving free stuff from rich donors, who of course want nothing, absolutely nothing, in return for their gifts. If that happens, they'll probably become the most hated government in living memory. Because you see, while Boris Johnson partied while people were dying, he didn't take a deliberate decision which will cause deaths. Whereas a report from the last Labour government said the introduction of winter fuel allowance would save four thousand lives. So much for the grown-ups, eh? Can you imagine Corbyn, with all his faults, getting caught like this, stealing poor people's heating money, while the very spectacles he looks through when he signs it off cost two grand and were provided by a rich lord? They must be the world's first pair of greed-tinted glasses. How ironic that the people this venal lot have picked on are those least likely to claim any benefits themselves, or even know what they're entitled to. I think this council needs to support this motion, or else we could be accused of acquiescing in this rather brutal piece of hypocrisy.
Thank you, councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Uh, can I just say, before we start, in the spirit of this, I did think I was going to be challenging just an exclusive Conservative motion in motion three, okay? Uh, so, thank you councillor, uh, councillor Morgan for bringing this important issue to the chambers. Whilst I usually try and discourage playing national politics in the chambers, I understand just what an important issue this is for all of us, uh, and especially the pensioners across East, uh, Redcar and Cleveland, especially the stat showing eighty-five percent, uh, will fall through that threshold or under the threshold. But today, we do find ourselves in a, in a rather peculiar situation. A situation that highlights the stark hypocrisy of the Conservative Party's approach to welfare and support for our most valuable citizens, vulnerable citizens. The Conservative leader has put forward, or seconded, sorry, now, a motion to reverse the winter fuel allowances. On the surface, this may seem like a commendable gesture, a step towards supporting our pensioners and the struggling to heat their homes during the bitter winter months. But let's take a moment to reflect on the broader context of this proposal. First, let's remember that it was the Conservative government with their historic agenda that chose to impose cuts on the very allowances in the first place. For years, their policies have systematically eroded the safety nets that families rely on. They have slashed funding for essential services and benefits, including the bedroom tax, the benefits cap, the two-child limit on child credit, legal aid cuts, public sector pay freezes and caps, cuts to local authority budgets as we all experience every single day, NHS budget restrictions, which makes waiting times much longer for many of our pensioners. Voting against free school meals, I could go on and on, and remember that this particular party opposed the creation of the winter fuel, uh, allowance in the first place. I could go on and on. And yet, at no point did they move a motion in this council chamber to reverse any of these cuts, at all, not in the last year or so of this administration. All them cuts I've just read, no, not did we see one motion to try and reverse any of it. Where was their motion to restore funding for social care, to fight for our skills or support our police? Now, as winter approaches and the temperature drops, we see a sudden change in tone. The same party that was overseeing cuts to essential support for vulnerable people now wants to position themselves as champions of the very groups they have neglected for so long. This is not genuine concern, this is blatant attempt to score political points. The Conservative Party have turned its back on those in need, while now attempting to appear themselves as saviors. This motion is less about helping our constituents, more about deflected criticism for their past actions. It's a classic case of do as I do and not as I, uh, do as I say and not as I do. Their leadership has fostered an environment where the, again, I am talking about the National Party, you guys, uh, treated as an afterthought, and yet they now wish to masquerade as defenders of those very individuals. And let's be clear, they still, they do these cuts, wasted billions through conism, and still left the government with a twenty-two billion black hole. And how could we possibly have known that when writing the manifesto, we didn't hold the purse string, councillor Clark? Ladies and gentlemen, I give you the sheriff of Nottingham trying to pull off wearing a pair of green tights. But let's put politics aside, put our residents first. Sorry. Well, let's put, put our residents first, this is not, this is not funny, it's serious. But let's be clear, anything the chamber agrees on today is a gesture, we are not the chosen decision-makers. However, we are not shying away from a very important issue on this side of the chamber, we understand the feeling out there. And we're going to be brave today, I think everyone agrees the system needed looking at, and I use my own family's experience as an example, my parents will not meet the threshold, but the extra money really helps them keep the house warm. Whilst one of my own aunties told me she uses Christmas presents, and she has the benefit of a pretty healthy private pension and doesn't need the allowance to keep the fire on.
Councillor Brown, sorry, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Sorry to interrupt you, councillor Brown, but I've just been made aware that it's five o'clock, it's past five o'clock, the meeting is, uh, finished, uh, and proposing, we wrap up now and move on to the next, all the business on to the next agenda. Anyone who's got questions, we'll get written responses. If, I'll, two, let me finish, two seconds, let me finish, but if you people want to vote to extend, then I'll put it to the vote, but that's what I'm proposing. Thank you for your point, point of order, but that point of order is rejected. Yep. All those in, do we have a second there for that? Right, all those in favour for half an hour, please show.
Well, my daughter's alone, I know.
All those in favour to extend, yeah? Have we done it, yeah? Okay, half an hour, yeah? Crack on then.
Right, right, can I, can I, can I crack on? Right, okay. This is why I am happy to support your motion, if you, councillor Morgan, can agree a couple of...
The voter, Mr Cheney, councillor Cheney? Yeah. It doesn't know, tar, tar five. No, tar five is the final, that's it. Once they get to half five, the meeting's finished, even if you haven't finished it.
So, what's the difference of voting for an extension and finishing the meeting at five? Where's the difference? Because you're not taking in no account.
People have voted for the extension half an hour, that's why I put it to the vote, and that's what they've said.
The press are not even here, can we all go on?
Carry on.
Right, I am happy to support your motion, councillor Morgan, if you can agree, uh, agree to a couple of slight changes, by all means, keep ownership of the motion. I, uh, I, I don't want to make an, uh, an amendment, but if you're happy to change the word, then, then we can support, uh, that, okay? Uh, and we do this because of the twenty-two black, black hole inherited from the Conservative, uh, party, and the need, so number one, uh, you agreed to change the word pause in the recommendation one to the word review. Number two, in the second recommendation, you agreed to remove the word suspended and leave it, leave it reviewed with a view to an urgent increase in of the threshold. Optional, and this is optional, so them two are fine, we can still support optional, in the spirit of councillor care, wanting to make this a cross-party motion, that we also acknowledge the dire financial situation the Conservatives left us in, by adding, the council acknowledges the very difficult situation that has been inherited by the incoming new government from the previous one. Again, that is completely optional, I think councillor care, that would go a long way to demonstrate that this is not a public stunt by the group, and we agree a way forward. So, but my question is, can councillor, uh, Morgan just agree them two word changes?
Can they be, have we got a second there for them word changes, please?
It's, I'm, I'm just asking her to change it, I'm not moving an amendment.
Are this, the, sorry, councillor Morgan and councillor care both have to agree to the changes?
But, but it's, it was councillor Morgan's, uh, motion.
Sorry, the advice I've been given is both propose and second after, after agree to the changes, that's the advice I've been given from the monitor opposite.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can councillor Brown just repeat those two, please?
Yes, yes, I certainly can, so, uh, number one was to agree to change the word pause in recommendation one to the word review. And then, number two, in the second recomme- uh, recommendation, you agreed to remove the word suspended and leave it with reviewed, but also with a view to urgently increase the threshold.
We've actually got copies, if you want to want, if you want to get them out quickly, yeah.
Uh, and, and what I'll do is, I will, I will remove the optional one in, in the spirit of just wanting to get this, uh, non-party political and to get the vote and to, to get it done. I, I think that's more than fair, councillor care, because it, it does send a direct message where, where we are, we are joining the spirit of the motion, and I will, like, totally forget that option three, okay? No, I don't, I leave one, I don't, I'm not moving an amendment, I'm leaving, I'm leaving the motion with the Lib Dems. But the, the big people. We've done it before, we've just agreed one word.
Bit of order, please, I'm going to bring the monitoring officer, officer in to clarify where we are, yeah?
To, to be fair, it's not precedent, we have changed the odd words of, of motions many times.
He's going to, he's going to explain.
I think what we're proposing then is an, an alteration to the motion, so we're not proposing an amendment with all the debate, the debate, what we're proposing is...
Just have two words.
An alteration, that if you agree, this, the proposer and the seconder agree and the meeting's happy, that, that motion's altered by those two words, then your motion becomes that other motion, but you have to, you both have to agree that.
Well, something we've done about twenty times in four over the last ten years, you've been a councillor, we're a councillor.
Guys, guys, come on, I know we've been a long day, come on, we've only got half an hour.
An amendment would be something that was proposed for and voted by everybody, and then that would be, um, become the new motion. An alteration is talking about changing the initial motion with the agreement of the proposer, um, and if everybody's happy and the meeting's happy with that, we can do that. It's, it's up, it's up to the proposer and seconder whether to act. If the proposer and seconder don't want to, to accept it, that's fine, it falls away. If the meeting's not happy with that, it falls away, um, and otherwise, it would have to be proposed. No. Yeah, the, the cons...
Let them on and off as it's explained, and you've got to accept the answer. Let them on and off as it's explained, and you've got to accept the answers.
The constitution allows the proposer and seconder to accept, to amend their motion. Well, it's an alteration if the proposer and seconder are happy that it's their motion that's altered by two words. So if they're happy and the meeting's happy, then it's a valid alteration and we can vote on that alteration.
Oh, sorry, councillor Brown hasn't explained why, effectively, why he wants these words changed. I understand all his points about the, his criticism of the Conservatives and the Conservative government, but what substantial difference will that wording make to what we're trying to propose?
It's up to, it's up to the proposer and the seconder to decide what they want to do with it. And then the meeting has to agree if they accept that, yeah?
Say no, Karl.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, if it comes on. Right, thank you. I'm going to actually stick with the original wording.
Right. This is falls away, so we're going to continue on here with the original?
Mayor, we need to stop and clarify the process because we've amended motions before. No one's explained that the ownership is an issue and why we've amended and altered.
I'll bring, I'll bring Andrew back in to explain the process now, yeah?
Yeah, so normally, an amendment would be proposed and seconded and then there'd be a vote on whether or not to make that amendment. And if the amendment's passed, then that becomes the motion. What we're saying here is because it's only two words, the-
Let him explain first.
What we're saying here is that you can technically alter a motion if the proposer and seconder agree to alter it. So if it's only a couple of words, sometimes it's not worth having a full debate about two words. But it's, it's the proposer and seconder who are agreeing to alter their own motion rather than making amendment.
Alterations, can this now be proposed as a formal amendment?
Yes, yes. Councillor Brown, do you want to move that, or?
Yes, yes, please.
Have we got a second for that, sorry? Oh, well, I need to get a second first before I do anything. No, guys, we're going to need a second for the amendment that councillor Brown's done, yeah? Got a second, councillor Neil, yeah? Right, we've got a proposal now to go straight to the vote?
Straight to the vote.
Right, now we need a vote to go to the vote. All those in favour? For the vote? Yes, to go to the vote. It's carried, right? Right, councillor Brown, because the, councillor Brown, because it's been, the amendment's been-
Please, I'm also going to add that word, the sentence I said as well about this amendment in writing is going to, you're going to have to get a new one. Which I want to add the line about, which I said was optional in my gesture of trying to make a compromise. The, the council acknowledges the very difficult financial situation that has been inherited by the incoming new government over the previous one. So, I, I do, I do want to add that now, it's been, has been rejected.
I'm going to bring the monitoring officer in to make sure it's all clear, because I'm going to get point of order from everyone.
If you ask me to go on a vote on a, I am moving and that's what I'm moving.
I'm going to, let him speak first, if you want to come back in, yeah?
Right, so what we've done is take a vote to go to the vote, but I think you now want-
With the word changes and the additional sentence. Which we need in writing, please.
So that's what we've moved to go to the vote on.
Guys, come on, it's been a long day, come on. We've got to be quiet so we can get, we're getting, we've got the legal people here to guide us. Councillor Richardson, come on, get a board. Yeah, yeah, tell me, yeah, 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 right.
Can't go for a vote, I'm not moving.
So what we've done is voted to make an amendment. And then voted, voted, then voted to move to the vote, which you haven't had. And now you're saying you want to make an additional amendment.
I'll remove the first amendment and then I'll move the second amendment.
Well, we voted to go to the vote first.
You're on the amendment.
The alteration fell away and you proposed an amendment, which was voted on and carried. And then you proposed to move straight to the vote on that amendment.
The amendment, there was no vote, my amendment?
So, so we need to have a vote on the amendment that you proposed in the first place.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then if it's not carried, then we continue on with the debate on the original.
It's been seconded by councillor Richardson.
It's been, it's been seconded, so we go to the vote.
Right, so all those in favour of the amendment, please show. He hasn't finished counting, so if you haven't. All those against the amendment? Against. That amendment's lost, so now we carry on with the original motion, is that right? Yeah, so we carry on with the original motion. Unless there's any further amendments.
Yes, yes, we would like, we would like to move a further amendment, please.
Right, have you got?
And that's the two words, plus the third law, we don't have it in writing, so the objection is being taken in writing.
Right, we're going to have to have a recess then, until we get that. No, no, no. Right, we've got it here. Right, and it, and it wrong.
What, what that?
Right, guys, come on, it's a bit of order, yeah? Come on, be professional, yeah?
Press your button, Kerry.
Has it been seconded, the amendment? Yeah. Go straight to the vote. Once we get it, so we can have a look at it first, all right? We've got a copy here.
Vote on this optional thing that's on the back. But we've already voted on the other pages, so why will, why do you want to vote again? Is it purely on what's on the back? That is solely the issue?
It's the two words that he wants to change and with the back.
Right, you voted to go straight to the vote, yeah? We now need to vote to go to the vote. Yeah? All those in favour to go to the vote, please show. Yeah, yeah. Carried. Right, so all those in favour of the second amendment? Yeah, all those against? Yeah, that's defeated, isn't it? Yeah, it's defeated. So now we're back on the original motion, is that right? Right, now we're back on the original motion from councillor Morgan and councillor Care. Right.
That we've got a time restriction, I move that we go straight to the vote.
Yeah, right, so we've got to go for a vote for a vote. Yeah, all those in favour for the vote? Right, it's carried now. Yeah, right then, so we're going to go straight to the vote then, so all those in favour of motion two? It's the original one that was done. Yeah, please, it's the original one from councillor Morgan and councillor Care, like I said, yeah? All those in favour, please show, yeah? All those against? That's it, all right, thank you for that. Right then, so the motions carried. So I'm surmising motion three is now withdrawn? Are we okay with councillor Care and councillor Berry to withdraw motion three? Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Right then, move on to motion four. Councillor Thompson to move, please.
Given the time allowed or left that we have after the previous procedures, I would ask that motion four and motion five remain on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Brilliant, thank you for that. No, unfortunately, I've been given advice from the monitoring officer that you're not allowed to do it, you have to move or you don't move it. Sorry. So are you going to move it or are you going to withdraw it? Move or withdraw?
Well, thank you very much for that opportunity. I will allow the, the motion not to be put and it will be reinstated at the next meeting.
That's fine, yeah. Right, so move on to moving, um, no, motion five again, councillor Thompson, do you want to move that or do you want to withdraw and resubmit?
Given the time and the inability to have a motion properly discussed, I would ask that the motion be withdrawn from the agenda and I will reinstate at the next council meeting.
Thank you, right then, moving on to number 12, to appoint members. Are we okay to take that on block? Is everyone all right with that? We need a, councillor Massey?
Sorry, I need appointment of members, list the North Yorkshire National Parks in there. If someone wants to come off the park, there has to be a vote, it's not politically proportionate. There has to be a vote at the council for that one.
Are we okay to remove that and then have the, you know, have the parties discuss that another time? Is that all right?
Seating in the chamber is relevant, that I tried to do before prematurely? Yeah? Well, at the risk of annoying the Lib Dem group again, I'd like to ask for reconsideration of the seating in the chamber. A newcomer coming to the chamber and seeing us sitting here with these councillors facing that way and these facing that way would assume that this is the administration and over here is the opposition. Now, I don't disagree with councillor Morgan when she said to me that the Lib Dem group are quite able to hold the administration to account. But I think also there is underlying that, an agreement, an informal agreement between the two groups which isn't apparent for the newcomer coming into the chamber. And for that reason, I think we should swap seats, because these are the cross-bench seats and I think it would clarify visually the relationship between the groups. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Andrew, do you want to come in? It's not on the agenda, so it's something you're going to have to write to Democratic Services and have the discussions there.
We've done that, tried that, but we'll discuss it later, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, you need to put your mic on so I can hear you, councillor Pugh, go on.
Yeah, but just a point of order on the North Yorkshire National Park Committee. Yeah, I'm coming off the committee. I know councillor Massey's asked that, can we have a vote on it or whatever? And you've said, couldn't wait till the next meeting. I'm just wondering, are we allowed to have a debate about whether it goes? I know people want to get home, but I just think it's really, really important that we do have proper representation on the North Yorkshire National Park Committee and I'd hate for us to go another month without us having that representation. The reason I'm coming off is just work commitments, but yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, we have the debate now, yeah, we've got five minutes. Your nominations from the floor? You can move, yes, move it here, I'm going on. Any other nominations? No? Is that it? Any more nominations?
...of what I would need to do, you said to write to Democratic Services, but we've done that already. So is there another protocol we can follow? Do we need a ruling from the legal office?
The guys will pick it up, councillor Anaway. We'll get the guys to pick it up, we'll, we'll pick it up. Yeah, yeah, we get sorted. Point of order, what about point of order?
We're actually talking about seating accommodation, but it's about appointing members. I was under the impression that, that people over here have been elected on an independent ticket and were independent, independent.
Yeah, yeah, no, guys, listen, listen, guys, I'm not going to, I'm not going to- Councillor Lake, it's not on the agenda, I'm not-
And usually, and usually what happens is in parliament, the cross-bench independents sit at the side.
It's not on the agenda, so it's been dismissed, it's not on the agenda, right?
It up at this point rather than earlier, which is why I brought it up at this point.
I didn't know which, I thought it was about members, not about the seating arrangements. Right, right, move on then, have we got any nominations? We've got councillor McGinnis. Anyone else? No, all those in favour then? Everyone all right with that, yeah? Carried, yeah, thank you for that. I'm not proposing to go to questions because I just think we haven't, we haven't got the time. What I'm going to say, you've got two options, you can get a written reply or we can roll them over to the next council meeting. And on that notice, I'm going to close the meetings, thank you very much, I know it's been difficult, thank you.